Get over here.
Okay, it is.
Peer pressure.
That's peer pressure.
Hey, it is 2:30 and, excuse me, sorry, guys. Hate to interrupt the party, but anyway, hey, it's 2:30 and we're going to go ahead and call the study station to order. We've got a lot to go over here today, so I'm going to turn it over to deputy city, or interim city manager, to see who's going first.
Yeah, I'm going to throw it right over to Debbie and we'll, we'll get started. We've got a long list of folks.
Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. I am not going to give you the history and the information that I put in your packet because I figure you can read and you can do that information. It'll save us a little time today, so I am just going to introduce and let the agencies do their own talking today. So, we are doing outside agency requests for the 2026 budget today. First up, we have Salina Grace and Chad Young.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to share today. Chad Young, Executive Director of Salina Grace, here to provide an update on how we've used the city's generous support over the past year and to share with you why our partnership is critical for 2026. As we look at Salina Grace, I just wanted to give a real quick overview of the two core services that we provide. We provide a low-barrier winter emergency shelter service. It's open to anyone in need in our community. There are no sobriety or income requirements for someone to enter in. We want to make sure that anyone who is on the streets of Salina has a safe, warm place to sleep. And then, of course, our second ministry is our Community Resource Center, which acts as a multi-agency center to wrap services around the individuals in crisis. This past year, we moved into our new 18,000 square foot building at 315 South Broadway. We did that by garnering support from the community. We did not ask for any city funds for this. We were able to raise those independently. The new space does allow us to serve more people effectively. Today, we have eight agencies that are regularly providing onsite services in our new facility, focusing in on mental health, addictions recovery, healthcare, housing support, transportation, ID requirements, and so forth. This multi-agency center has proven to be a best practice in ending homelessness more efficiently and as well as compassionately. So, our goal is to meet people where they are, help them stabilize, get them out of crisis, and then walk along with them to help them to get the long-term assistance they need and work towards self-sufficiency. So, over this past year, your support has helped us as we reach out to those who are struggling with homeless-related issues and poverty issues. You helped us to shelter 92 men, 35 women, and four kids during the wintertime. In addition to that, over this past year, we served 16,000 meals, and we average between 50 to 60 people a day in our Community Resource Center. Most importantly, we realize that the meals and shelter and immediate care needs that we provide, they are a gateway that helps us to build the trust and opens the door to the longer-term change that we would like to see for our folks. So, what we're talking about is more than just numbers, and this is Jason. Jason was homeless here in our community for a number of years. Here he is a few years ago coming into the Resource Center for a meal, and he was sharing with us that his struggles were, he was paranoid, he was hearing voices, he tried to numb the voices with drugs and alcohol, and when that stopped working, he, he realized that he was still addicted. He couldn't quit the drugs and alcohol. He was still suffering the mental health issues, and it had just taken over his life. He lost his family, he lost, went to jail, became homeless, and just did not know how to put the pieces back together. There, at the Resource Center, we continued to reach out to him and ask him if he would like to get some greater help until one day, he finally said, yes, I'm ready to get the help that I need. And we were able to help him transition over to the Salina Rescue Mission, where he entered our new life program, and we were able to help him to develop the skills he needed to move forward in life. We helped him connect with mental health services. We helped him to understand more about sobriety issues, coping skills, and start a path of sobriety as well as learning how to cope with life in general. And through it all, today, a couple of years later, and because that's how long some of this change can take, Jason's sober, he's working full-time, he's living now successfully in the community. He's, and plus, he's encouraging others that come to Salina Grace to utilize the resources that we have and to get the help that they need. So, as we move forward, we want to talk about what this support means for the City of Salina. It means fewer people living on the streets in our community, especially downtown. It means fewer 911 calls, fewer ER visits, fewer use of emergency services, and fewer arrests. This prevention and recovery and public safety, all working together. Once again, this is prevention, recovery, and public safety, all working together here. And what we're striving to do is make it easy for people in our community to find the help that they need. This, for 2026, our request for funding, our budget is $570,000 this year. We're asking to keep our budget at the same amount that we were supported at last year, which is $90,000. So, this request will continue to help us shelter operations run at the Community Resource Center so that guests in crisis has a place to go other than jail, the hospital, or the streets. I think it's been fairly effective over this past year, and of course, we're really excited to share that this year, starting in a week or two here, we're going to be opening up our showers and laundry services to those in need in our community. Once again, these services draw people in so that we can then begin to get them the real help that they need, and we invite you to come out and see this for yourself. Here next Tuesday, we're going to have an open house on June 17th from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., and we invite you to come and see how we're continuing to grow our partnerships in the community and provide services that assist everybody in our community. And with that, thank you for your time, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for?
Are you sure that's enough?
Well, Dr. Davis, we would always love more, but I also remember being here at this podium last year, and it was shared with me very, very strongly, I might add, it was shared with me, that there were limited funds, limited budgets, and, and we all had to live within fiscal restraints. We do our best to live within those fiscal restraints. We've been working really hard to grow support from the community, okay? So, right now, the way our budget is, 25% of our, our funding comes from government entities, okay, with the City of Salina being the primary one. 25% comes from foundations, and the other 50% comes from the general public, people here in our community believing in what we do, wanting to see us succeed, and stepping up to help us. And so, with that, our goal is to continue to increase our support from other areas and try not to be a burden to the budget of the City of Salina. But yes, we're always accepting further donations.
I would add that, you know, I've been to the locations, and they do operate on a very tight budget, various, with support of the community, and, and that is the volunteers and the people that have compassion. The city would fail doing what you're doing, Chad, very fast, so I thank you for what you, you and everyone involved do.
Well, thank you. Well, we, we do want to do it effectively, but we also want to do it efficiently, and so we, we do appreciate your support.
I wish yours was a service we didn't need, but appreciate you guys for doing it.
Thank you. I wish we, we were a service not needed as well.
I know, there's a lot of those, so, anyway. Chad, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
When you got to your dais, there was a presentation that wasn't in the packet, so this is Salina Tennis, and they'll be up next.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
I have a emergency I'm coordinating at the household, so if you see me walk out, I'm listening, but I'll be in the back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No reflection on what happens to be being said at the moment?
Whoever.
Understood. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Clark Renfro, President of Salina Tennis Alliance. This is Brian Van Kuren, who is the Executive Director, Salina Tennis Alliance. I'll go over briefly our, our slides here and then cut to the chase. Again, our, our mission is to grow the game of tennis, providing youth, families, and adults affordable access to high-quality tennis facilities and programming opportunities, and I think we successfully accomplished that in a short period of time that we've been in existence, and we continue to strive to, to meet the, the mission and, and the needs of the community in terms of tennis. Moving on to the next page, and that's just a picture of the mural that was done the year we opened, which is really a nice, I think, tribute to what we're, we're trying to accomplish. Some of the highlights in 2024, we were awarded the Outstanding Tennis, Community Tennis Organization in the State of Kansas by the United States Tennis Association and the Missouri Valley Region, which was, again, a tribute to, I think, Brian and his team and the effort that's being done here locally and, and even regionally for that matter. We updated the bathrooms in, in the tennis building, which was part of the, the City of Salina effort to enhance amenities for events and tournaments that we're bringing into, to the community. The improved sidewalks around the perimeter, again, provided by the city, was done this past year, made for easier and safer access to the facility. Matchpoint Clinics, that's part of the effort with Salina Tennis Alliance in the City of Salina. That is an ongoing junior program that's held in the month of June, and we launched that last year, had 23 kids. This year, we have over 30 in that program. Tennis Camp and tournaments for middle school and high school athletes held in July, had over 25 kids in that program, and then we continue to provide a venue for high school, middle school, and college tournaments in the spring, summer, and fall, and those continue to, to grow in, in number and scale. The ITA NAI Central West Tournament, that was held, this is the second year that we held that, in 2024. The, the number here, I think, actually may be off. It's got over 125. I think it's closer to over 250 because we have, I think, a 60-person draw in singles and doubles for men and women, so that actually should be 250. But it's a large tournament and brings in a lot of schools from around the area and country, and something that we haven't been able to host previously. Westland, men and women, had a combined nine events held in the spring and the fall, and then I'll let you look on the rest of there. We continue to have USTA leagues, which is an ongoing effort by USTA to provide adult leagues for men and women, and then we also provide programming for Special Olympics, the Blue Thunder team in particular here in Salina. The next slide, just as, as a focus on how tennis is doing nationally and some numbers. These, these are, participation numbers come out annually. These, these came out in March of, of this year. Tennis continues to grow in, in numbers and, year over year, nearly 26 million, which is an all-time high this past year, and that continues to grow. There's a few other metrics that aren't in here that I'd be more than happy to share with you, but the USTA consists of 16 sections within the, the country. Kansas resides in the Missouri Valley section, which is Kansas, Oklahoma, Missouri, Nebraska, and Iowa, and that particular section had the third-highest growth within its region with additional participants, and in Kansas, within that region, I think, can boast numbers that are right up there as well. So, the game continues to grow in popularity and numbers, both from young juniors to, to adults. So, USTA has put a lot of dollars behind promoting it and giving dollars to entities that are growing the game. So, the future is bright for tennis, and it continues to grow. There's other sports that happen to have certainly high growth in, in recent years, but tennis continues to be the driving force behind, behind racket sports. The next slide, please. Our vision for, go back, yeah, thanks, for 2025 and 26, again, just this past month, we held the 5A State Boys Tennis Tournament. Again, this was the second state tournament that we hosted in the last two years, and prior to that, we hadn't, Salina hadn't hosted a tournament in over 20 years, just because we hadn't had the facility. So, we look for more of that to come, and I think that's a, a feather in our cap with KESHA, and, and like I said, more to come there. We added a professional-grade public address system, which really enhances our ability to communicate throughout the facility. That was all funded privately through funds raised by STA. We got that installed right before the 5A State Tournament, excuse me, which was really a big boost to be able to get information and communication throughout the facility. So, huge, huge boost to what we, we've been able to do, and, and it's a, a, a professional-grade system that's, you see in other venues, both NCAA and professional sports venues. So, we're, we're happy to have that in place. We'll have more tournaments on the horizon. We have additional shade options that we're looking to put, place out there. We're, we're low on trees and shade, but we have the pavilion, and, and so there's efforts we're looking there to provide some additional shade options for, for fans and for players. There's a, what we call a bracket board that will go on at the pavilion, which will allow us to put large brackets for bigger tournaments there. Right now, we're using tables, and that'll go on hopefully here in the next two months. We've got a, a supplier that's going to do that in kind for us. And again, we, we continue to add programs and, and opportunities for people to, to be involved with, with the game. So, we're excited where, where we're at and where we're headed. That's just a, a picture there of last year's, one of the youth programming camps that we had in place. Next slide, please. And that's, just talks a little bit about the Matchpoint Tennis Camp that we do in conjunction with the city that's ongoing right now in June. It just talks about some of the ages and some of the groups that we have, have involved with that. Keep in mind, and we haven't gone full-scale on this, but we have opportunities for scholarships for kids that maybe don't have the means to, we try to make these as affordable as possible, but that we realize there may be in some instances, there are kids that may not have the means to, to, to gain access to that. So, we have scholarships and opportunities that provide opportunity, or opportunities for kids to participate that otherwise may not have that, that chance. Next slide, please. That's just a picture of the Special Olympics Blue Thunder team, and Brian, what are they, maybe 30, about 30 come out weekly?
Yeah, gosh, we've had over 30. We've had over 40 one time as well. It's, it come out every Tuesday. Sorry. They come out every Tuesday evening, and there's, gosh, maybe 30 to 40 people, and they take up three to four courts, and it's just, it's awesome to see just the growth we're able to have and just that actually have the facility to do so for them as well.
Yeah, it, it's, it's, it's fun to watch. They're, they have a lot of energy, they're having a blast, and, and we have the means to be able to provide them a venue to get to do that. So, that's, it's, it's a great group. Next slide, these are a couple of slides, just as our, we have the opportunity to reserve courts. As you know, the courts are open to the public, they're free. If, if you want to reserve it for an event or, or some other, you have that opportunity and reserve them for, for a fee, and so you can go online and do that, and it's, it's, it's pretty simple to do. But just wanted to provide that screenshot of what we've got. Next slide, it's kind of just more of the same there from our website. Next slide, this is our budget. We're not a whole lot different from, from last year. Our request from the city is, again, 40,000. As you noticed there, we're a little short on the balancing revenues with expenses, but those, after a full year really under our belt, we have a little bit better idea of kind of where we are with utilities and repairs and, and cleaning water and that sort of thing, and so that's where we're basing those numbers off of. We care for the lawn within the, the perimeter of the, or within the, the confines of the facility. Outside of that, the city has, so we have responsibility for the lawn care there, and then with the bathrooms that were added this past year, we have the responsibility of keeping those clean, and so we have a cleaning service that comes in weekly and if more needed to take care of that, and that's been working out well. And we had those all bid when we, through that process. So, those are kind of the, the numbers. I'll open it up to, to questions and take it from there.
Okay, I'll start to my right. Mary, have any questions?
Nothing I do. Thank you. I have an observation recently as by there, and I know there was big plans for the, the pool building, and what once said Salina Municipal Pool. I just see an identity issue. Is there any plans to put a sign up there, Salina Tennis Alliance, or?
Yeah, so say, say that again. You saw the sign. Where was the municipal pool sign?
Right on the front of the building.
Yeah, so it's in stone, I believe, isn't it, or is it, I don't?
No, it was, it was a kind of a metal sign.
I don't know if I, I don't know if I've, I've seen that or know where that is.
Yeah.
What other old people are here?
So, is it still there? Or you're saying that was there when it was there, you're saying have one. I, I got you. I follow you. Yeah. There has been talk about that. Again, all it takes is money. So, but yeah, we have had talks about having a sign there in the front, and then as you come in off of Ohio through that and entering the midway. But yeah, discussions have been held, but again, it's, it's just a, a financial piece of how nice we want to get it and how nice it wants to, we need it to be, so.
So, is there still discussion about making it all premier inside?
Sure, absolutely. And, and the, the intent, Commissioner, is, you know, as we, you know, this is a work-in-process, as we grow and expand, you know, see those opportunities. I think down the road, we'll, we'll continue to build on what we have. I mean, the, the footprint is there. We have room to grow. We're, we're going to need more courts. It's not a matter of when, or if, it's, it's a matter of when. We have that opportunity, but we, we're just kind of taking baby steps here as we get through this process.
Well, I'm glad it's going well.
I don't have any questions, just comments. It looks like it's progressing over time very well, and had some out-of-town visitors recently who commented how nice the courts looked, and we drove past, and it happened to be very full and busy at that time. Quite impressed.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll make just one comment, and thanks for, for that. The, the courts are being used. There's times where you can drive by and there may not be anybody there. There's times where you can drive by baseball diamonds, there's nobody there. It's just, there's times where you drive downtown and it's, you know, middle of the night, and there's no people. It just depends, there's, but there's numbers back us up. We're having more events. We've got more people playing. There's more girls and boys playing on the high school and middle school tennis teams. So, our, our job is to navigate that, continue to grow it, and there'll be times where there isn't anybody on those courts, but we hope that's less and less as we, we proceed. So, thank you.
And I know we appreciate your work on this. I know we were able to get better and more courts with the help, obviously, of Salina Alliance than we would have done as a city. So, again, thanks for that, and I think this kind of reminds me a little bit of the Field House. You know, the Field House took a while for programming to start taking place, and, and now we're at a place where the Field House is, is, you know, very busy every, almost every night of the week. So, I think it, it just takes a little bit of time for new facilities like this to, to get some momentum, so glad, thank you for working on it.
Well, yeah, we appreciate it. We couldn't do it without our partnership with the city, and certainly the school district is a part of that, and I think it's, again, a truly an alliance that, that makes it work. So, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next up is OCCK, and I did add a couple of pages on there. The two green sheets that are added to your dais are the additions to their presentation. So, we'll ask Trell.
Hi, Trell Grinter, OCCK Transportation Director. Thank you for another year. Last year, I came super, super pregnant. I had my baby the next day, so we are all very, very lucky, very lucky that that's not what's happening this year. Patrick Willarias sends his regards. He did make the decision to retire this year, so it feels a little bit weird without my sidekick here, but we're going to rock and roll. So, I've got quite a bit to update you on. Go ahead and go to the next slide. As OCCK, our vision is driven with commitment and respect. We venture out to ensure the independence of our passengers for all communities we serve. And as OCCK as an entire entity, we are truly here to promote and contribute to the success of our customers, exercise and/or influence leadership in the creation of quality communities, and ensure our financial success so our customers can be successful. A couple of stories that, that drive us on the next slide. Alexis G. said, "I started riding the bus because I couldn't afford a car. Now I'm able to get to work, and I don't have to worry about being late." And then George F. said, "I don't know what I would do without OCCK. You've helped me stay independent, and that means everything." And George is somebody that goes to the hospital regularly for various, various appointments. It is such an honor that we get to serve people every single day. So, our paratransit numbers, in 2024, my goal was to remain consistent or lower than 2023. Well, that doesn't make sense. We want to move more people. Every single year, we talk about paratransit eligibility, and are people truly taking that paratransit service, or are they just getting that really fancy ride that comes to their curb to get them where they need to go? So, we have increased our attention to our paratransit eligibility, and I have a slide on that. Paratransit is supposed to support people who functionally cannot access the fixed route. So, if someone cannot get to the Green City Go Bus, that's where our paratransit teams come into, into play. Now, 71,000 rides were taken in 2024. 57,000 of those were focused focused just here in Salina. Salina to Salina or somebody in Salina was going to Kansas City for a medical treatment and then we brought them back. They live and reside, work in Salina. Now, the difference between that fifty-seven and seventy-one, we do give our regional paratransit transportation and that part of our transportation is sponsored by our Salina Regional Health Foundation. So we truly wanted to make sure that the city of Salina's dollars are being used here in Salina for its residents. So the commission is not making a decision to pay for people who live in Minneapolis for their travel and that, that reflects in, in our budget request. Hopping down to City Go, we're seeing that number continue to rise, we're at two hundred forty-five thousand rides in 2024 and in the past thirty days this year in, in May, we gave thirty thousand rides just in one month. Typically, May, over the years, it has grown, but this year it took a three thousand, almost four thousand rider jump. Something to look forward to when you hop on a City Go bus next is an increase in technology. We have Wi-Fi onboard, so people can access their free, or not their free passes, their digital passes if they don't have access to a cell phone that has cellular service. Also, we increased the ADA adherence on those buses. Automated voices will announce when we are approaching stops and a text will scroll across what the current stop is and what your next stop is going to be. This is a federal requirement that we announce those stops, human error, that completely takes it out of it. So now we just have to make sure our geo-fencing is exactly where we need it to be. So we're going to see another wonderful year in 2025 of increased ridership. Now, I just realized that my numbers did not print Eighty-One Connection and Can Connect. Can Connect had seven thousand three hundred eight rides, that's on the next slide. And that is those rides from Salina to Work in Solomon and then back each day and then they receive a free pass to ride City Go for any, anything there. Eighty-One Connection, their rides were at two thousand four hundred. That is also ultimately, it is a very heavy focus on employment or getting people to resources. Very few people, it has increased because we have gone fare free due to a grant in north central Kansas. We went fare free for this spring. It did increase just the recreational ridership, but almost all of those, those riders on Eighty-One are going for medical or resource or work. Now, a breakdown in our ridership trip purpose, twenty-eight percent are riding for work, maybe that's a skills training, maybe that's going to interviews, forty-two percent are going to medical and thirty percent, that's, that's a big chunk of numbers. That has everything from nutrition to education, residential, going somewhere and then coming back home. So if you ever want those numbers broken down, I can absolutely do that. Currently, for our paratransit, we have to do everything by hand. So one of the things that we are working on here in the next six months and hopefully going to be implementing in January will be paratransit software. That will hopefully allow the passengers to have more control in an app-based form, so it's one less person that they're having to ask for permission as they access their city. Okay, hopping into eligibility. So every year we talk about, are the people that are getting these rides, are we just giving rides to everybody that asks for it? Maybe at some point we have, but we have truly delved into the ADA paratransit as it complements our fixed routes. So within a three quarters of a mile, we do have a responsibility, if someone qualifies for that ride, we do need to give them their ride within an hour, hour before, hour after, we kind of have a cushion. So if we can't get them right then, we can get their ride a little bit later, we have that obligation as public transit to make sure we are getting them where they need to go. Now, it's probably pretty tiny on there, but we have people give us a, a pretty low restrictive list of things so we can ensure their safety on the vehicle. And these go to our team, our mobility specialist, then reviews them and if there's anything that's odd, anything that would make that person more qualified to ride City Go, then my team has that conversation with them. We provide them training so they can access the fixed route and we provide free passes so they can feel supported as, as they're bridging that gap. Now, us seeing that number hold steady and not grow out of control, more and more people are starting to use the fixed route, we see that number going up and paratransit holding steady, that's what we want to see. As we dive deeper into this, sometimes people can use City Go most of the year, but in the winter, it gets really hard to roll in the snow. It's really hard to roll a wheelchair. It's really hard to walk on crutches in the ice. So that would be an opportunity for someone to access our paratransit rides on a temporary basis. And so we are having more and more of those conversations. If you would like to know more, I am all about having those conversations and, and teaching about that process in more depth. Okay, and then in a couple of additional slides, I have requested an increase this year. We kept our paratransit request level with last year, so you'll see an increase in City Go. We have several partnerships on the paratransit side that help, help that income. Our fixed route fares go into our, our income for that City Go, but really that's, that's, those are the vehicles that are getting the most people around this city. We cover a majority of, of the city and part of why I have requested additional dollars is because we are going to be starting a route redesign. August fourth will be the launch of some updated, updated routes. We are going to be saving a hundred fifty miles per day, so no doubt that will save us on fuel costs, no doubt that will save us on driver hours. So this increase, I would be, if, if it all works out the way the numbers and the data say it's going to work out, I would be shocked if we, if we used it all up and sucked that request dry, but it is definitely there in the case that we get a lot of negative feedback and we need to move our routes back to what we have seen has been working for the last fifteen years. It will also help us with education for passengers as they learn a new route to work, to the doctor's office, to where their kids are headed to school. I did keep my drivers at a three percent cost of living increase. OCCK did take on a health insurance subsidy, so that increased it, increased our driver wages, not our driver wages, but what, what OCCK puts in for our drivers. I have massively decreased the amount of turnover, so our driver longevity is continuing to grow. I have someone on our team that has been with us for twenty-plus years, that's amazing. I spoke about our restructuring. Software for both paratransit and fixed routes are going to make a huge impact in that budget. Software is not cheap though. We're currently working on a twenty thousand dollar software and we're hoping to move to something that will be about eighty thousand dollars for paratransit. That's going to take a big chunk of that budget, but it is going to provide us more opportunities to bring numbers, trip purposes and control in, in our passengers' hands. A few other cost-saving opportunities, I would love to discuss some fuel purchasing. OCCK from, I'm aware, I've been here for about seven years, we've never purchased fuel from the city. OCCK in Salina purchases, purchases about five hundred gallons a day in Salina, so I would love to entertain that as a, as a cost savings measure. We're also doing a lot with vehicle maintenance, tons, tons of effort is going into preventative care where we were maybe a little bit more on the reactive side, when something broke down, we would fix it. We're kind of flipping that and getting ahead of the problem instead of getting behind it. So that's going to cost us a little bit and then once we're ahead of it, we will start seeing those returns. I am also continuing to delve into partnerships. We just launched our, our rides for Schwan's employees, they can ride the bus and we've seen amazing, amazing turnout from there. Back to the route restructuring, I'm going to hop back there, like I said, it was a hundred fifty miles per day savings and I do have a route breakdown if you would like to see that. We're going to be removing twenty underused stops, they had less than one passenger, like point two of a passenger daily for the last fifteen years, I think it's probably time that we skip that stop. In those stops that are being removed, there will absolutely be a close stop by that or we will support them. I've got my CDL, if somebody misses all of the marketing that we're about to do for these stops, I will go pick them up and we'll figure out how to get them there. In these changes to save on miles, in these changes, we don't want it to be all about us. This is based on data from our passengers, where they're going the most frequently, where they are wanting to go faster. On our red route, for example, a trip that would be going to, to the library or to the senior center, if somebody got on the red, they would have to ride almost forty-five minutes to get to the library. We are going to flip that, it is going to be about a three minute, a three minute ride. So we are going to get people where they need to go faster and we're going to save a ton of miles. I'm, I'm not going to complain about that. Okay, let me open it up for questions. I know that was a lot coming at you.
Just one, and I don't know if I missed it, was there an actual dollar amount?
Yes, yes, so our, our, our total dollar amount is one million fifty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars and that blends our operating costs, our overhead costs and capital costs. And that capital cost did increase from past years, vehicles are just more expensive unfortunately. That still does include the match from KDOT in that as well.
So.
So that forty-three thousand dollars is two vehicles, a paratransit van or a transit van and a City Go green bus.
One question unrelated to the budget.
Yep, nope, that's okay.
I was out at the airport late one night waiting for my bag and I noticed there's a sign up there that says if you need a ride to or from the airport.
Yeah.
Call OCCK for just two dollars.
Two dollars.
Is that?
Yep, yep. In the middle of the night, we might have a little trouble getting to you, but yes, if you schedule that ride, especially if you're coming in the night, if you schedule it about twenty-four hours in advance, we can, we can pretty much take care of that.
I thought maybe it was an old, old sign that hadn't been taken down, but.
It's two dollars each way. Yep, yep. Here in Salina, any ride you need.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Parking's pretty okay out there though, but that ride definitely helps, you don't have to worry about that vehicle.
Well, there was a gentleman who had come in, the plane was late, but so, and his ride couldn't meet him, so.
Yep.
People that got him to where he was going, but I'm saying, wow, I didn't know how much in advance you had to call for the ride, but.
If it's, if it's kind of between eight and four, we can, we could probably get it. We're, we're ready for that airport run between those times. If it's a two o'clock in the morning run, I'd like a little heads up, that just makes it a little bit easier to wake somebody up so they can come drive them. But yeah, we will take that ride.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd follow up to that.
Sure.
So if he gets in at two, two AM.
We will try our best to take care of you.
You're going to pick him up.
I'm not. We will try our very best, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, and it'll be two bucks.
So, so like if it's four in the afternoon.
Yep, call us.
You just call.
Call us, yep.
Well, that's good to know.
Yep.
What is your total budget?
Oh, our total total or our total that we're requesting from you?
Total total.
Total total. I run about a six million dollar budget.
Okay, and is the state, KDOT, increased their funding?
They're trying to, I keep asking them for it.
You're, you're asking us for almost ten percent increase.
Correct.
Are they?
And I, I, I tell them all of our numbers as well and I always request fairly. They do match a huge percent of that. They are typically a seventy percent, thirty percent, so if you are putting a million dollars into it, they will match that at that seventy percent rate. But they have to approve that, of course. So every October, we start gathering our grant materials and we share with them the justification. We are their largest rural transportation, we take up a considerable amount of KDOT's rural transportation budget, I am sure of that, but we're, we're given a lot of rides, so they're not afraid, they're not afraid to meet us where we're at.
Okay, so your technology improvements, I've been on buses in the big cities.
Yep.
So it's going to be just like that, huh?
Ding, you're arriving at, yeah. It's something like that. It's not quite as perfect as that, but yes, very much so. It will come across, some of them do ding, it will come across and let them know what time it is, what stop we're approaching, any major intersections, so it helps people who might have visual impairments or hearing impairments know where they're at in the, in the city.
And do you have the app, the transit app that people can?
Yep, they have an app and it will show you exactly where your bus is in real time, so then you know, okay, it's pouring rain, I can step out of, of where I'm having shelter because my bus is about to, about to arrive. Or, oh, my bus never showed up, well, whoops, I'm three minutes late, my bus is on to the next stop, oh rats. So then it's helping people be more on time to their stops and I think that's a huge, huge reason why we're seeing an increase in ridership is because they're able to count on that reliability. It also makes it easier for us when people call in and say, oh, your driver's here, 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 they're doing this and this, we can hop straight in with GPS and we can see exactly what's going on in location regards to that. And then we do have video cameras on our vehicles, so then we can look deeper into those situations.
And how much does a bus pass cost?
It is two dollars to ride for the day.
All day?
And, all day, yep. One dollar for one way, so if you just need to go one place, so occasionally I ride home from dinner downtown, I'll ride home and get off at the social security stop and then I'll, I'll walk the rest of the way home or have somebody pick me up to go the last half a mile home. That would cost me a dollar. To ride all day, it's two dollars and for a month pass, it's thirty-five.
That's pretty reasonable. You haven't raised those rates.
We have not ever risen the rates. It doesn't make a big enough difference as we have been working through the numbers in what KDOT puts in as to what OCCK puts in and then what the city would be responsible for. It hasn't, there hasn't been an outweighing number for that. Consistently, passengers tell us, oh my gosh, without the bus, I wouldn't have been able to get to where I need to go. That price helps people get back on their feet more often than I've heard because they're able to get to where they're going. It's not an unnecessary burden on them. I've not gone farther in entertaining a, a increase, I would definitely work with my passengers because that would be, that would potentially be unexpected or be hard for them to make that adjustments, especially if there's somebody that has been, they call themselves, they've been riding since day one, I've been here since day one, I'm a long-term rider, that would be a huge, a huge shift for them. Not impossible, but it would be a big shift.
Well, do these riders realize that ninety percent of that is subsidized?
Yes, we talk to them about it and the culture around our buses are, is actually pretty magical. They almost police themselves when a passenger is making a unruly decision, making a decision that's outside of our policies or going to make the bus get stopped. They talk about that, hey, stop doing that, you're going to get us kicked off, we don't want that, and then somebody will simmer down. They also talk about, hey, if the city finds out about this, the bus routes are going to go away, we don't want that. And so they, they talk amongst themselves of, hey, we've got to keep this, we've got to keep it just as much as the drivers are working hard, the passengers have to work just as hard at, at making sure that we're using the bus the way we need to be using the bus.
Related question, I think a year or two ago it was mentioned that if you were to raise the bus fares, KDOT would decrease its amount by that much?
Yep.
So it became a no net gain to you?
It just really doesn't help us.
So that's still the situation?
Yep, yep. Helps KDOT.
All right. I've got a couple of quick questions, but I don't, I want to make it short because we have a lot of other opportunities.
You've got a long afternoon.
I've always said we did, we need to put OCCK at the end because this one always seems to take the longest, but the airport runs, is that brand, is that new?
We have always done it and we actually used to have a shuttle that sat out there every time a plane would arrive. The ridership was so low that we made the decision to fold that vehicle into our current ridership and then just respond to calls.
And that's at the airport?
Correct.
I'm not, I guess I'm, I'm struggling with seeing that that's OCCK's mission.
I know.
So that's, that's, that's mine.
That was in place. That was in place, that was in place before I got to OCCK. So, I don't, I don't exactly know the history of that, but, yes.
We may need to talk about that. The other thing is, explain to me briefly the Schwanz arrangement you have now.
Sure. So, working with Schwanz in hope to expand our routes and fortify the funding of a potential more southern route to get riders to industrial jobs south of town. We have partnered with them. And anybody that works for Schwanz has a Schwanz ID, even if it's a temp job, as long as it has that Schwanz job or Schwanz logo, they can show that to a bus driver. Hop right on.
And that's just on the, the transit?
That's on the fixed, fixed routes, yep. And then if anybody is working at Schwanz that needs a paratransit level of accessibility, they have to follow that eligibility piece. We're not just gonna give any ride from door to, to the front door of Schwanz. They do have to, they do have to qualify.
Does Schwanz help underwrite that at all?
Say that again.
Does Schwanz help underwrite that program at all? They do?
Yes. Yes. And that, that is intended for expansion as we move into this next year.
Perfect, thank you.
I just, sorry to look at you like that. I just went right down the line.
Yeah. I appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you.
I don't see having, not having the public transportation aspect of it, and you guys do it well. It's not something the city probably needs to take on fully, so...
No, I think, I think we've cracked the code on a beautiful partnership in this and how we continue to move forward. We're definitely something very unique, for sure in Kansas, and ultimately across. I've had consultants in for those software pieces, and they are mind-blown. They're mind-blown at the amount of rides that we give, with the level of infrastructure that we have, how we're able to run so efficiently with so little. It doesn't quite feel like a little when I ask you for the number that I just asked you for, but it's, we've got, we've got four dispatchers. And the amount of rides that OCCK fixed route gives, it would be the equivalent of about ten, ten dispatchers. And we've been able to do it with four and have amazing on-time performance and great customer service. So, thank you for considering this. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, next up, we'll hear from Salina Community Economic Development Organization.
Good afternoon. Hope everybody is doing well today. It's been an exciting couple of months. Our former city manager kinda gave us a gift before he departed of reorganizing our bylaws and adding a couple additional changes to the bylaws, the changes in our annual budget rather than the three-year budget we had, had worked off previously. But, I think everything is, started off very well this year. Appreciate everybody taking part in the first joint meeting between the city, county, chamber, airport board, the EDO board that was held, I guess that was in March. I think that, from the feedback I got from people, everybody felt very positive about that. Communications is always important, very critical. So, we're excited about that. We'll also talk a little bit more about some other changes that we're gonna make. But, let's go to the next slide, please. Uh, so, we're gonna jump right into money right off the bat. So, we are not asking for an increase this year. The city, uh, last year gave us a bump up to three hundred thousand. We are asking for that same amount again. You can see the amounts. We have asked for an increase from Saline County. We've not heard any response back from yet. They're still in their process. We'll be asking the airport to continue their fifty thousand dollars. And then, of course, the chamber is, is an in-kind donation of office space and support there. So, we're gonna be right at four hundred thousand this year, which is just a slight gradual increase. The county did point out that we were asking for a forty percent increase. And we just said, well, that's the way the numbers work. I mean, that, when we asked for that increase, we didn't look at the percentages, but we felt like the county needed to work on their commitment and donations. And hopefully, we'll see what happens. Maybe we'll still be at the same amount. Maybe, maybe they'll take some money away. I really don't know yet, but we're working through that process. So, uh, we're gonna flip on over to the next one. So, that's, that's the budget. Next slide. The next two, you can go on to the next one. These are, uh, these are the ones you all have seen at the strategic planning session that Commissioner Hoppeck and Commissioner Longbine attended. We talked about those at the, the annual meeting. We talked about the increases in the job numbers. If you go back, those who all were there, you look at the, the total investments the community has made over, it'll be ten years at the end of this year that our organization's been in place. I'll celebrate my ninth anniversary in December coming here. And we're looking at a ROI for every dollar that's been invested, the dollars that have been spent by industries, people doing housing work, other projects that we've been involved with, turned out to be two hundred and forty-four dollars. So, we feel like that's a pretty good return on investment for the community just on the, on the investment numbers, not counting the jobs, the impact from the construction, all that impact, you know, adds up pretty, pretty sizable. Especially, we saw that with, with the Schwanz project just due to the scope of that. Flip on over to the next one. This is a page we had on our strategic planning session that we did also in March. Dr. Lindsay Dryling did the, and Amy Cole did that for us. We had, gosh, there was twenty-something community leaders there, including Jacob. Felt like we had a very good input from the community. And we pretty much knew generally the areas that we wanted to continue to focus on. And it was responded through discussions, through the research that was done previously before the event, that aerospace and aviation is still our top priority because of Salina Airport Authority, what's going on out there. Next would be advanced manufacturing. And that's a pretty much a very broad category. But, uh, if you look at any manufacturing plant today, if you're not considered advanced, you're gonna be dying. And we've seen, you know, a few changes here locally that are happening, that people evolved over the years. But, this is something that we think is important. I'll talk more about that in a minute. Third one is agribusiness and food innovation. Obviously, Schwanz, McSheer's, the Land Institute, people like that are making some critical changes, investments in the community that we're, we're benefiting from. And then the last, the fourth one, logistics and distribution. Obviously, with the new distribution center that's coming on board, hopefully, next month. That's gonna continue to show interest and generate interest. And the airport has seen other companies are reaching out in that area. So, uh, the board has not, not approved. The final document, we'll be doing that at the nineteenth at our next board meeting. And, but this is, the board has, has instructed me, and we're wanting to get with the housing situation much better in hand. And I was out by, uh, the development Sunday when I was in some shopping next door. They were really making some really good progress out there. And we, we'd had some discussions with their marketing director out of Wichita. And she invited me to come out and take a look at it last week. Unfortunately, I was out of town. But, uh, I'm, it's real exciting to see that. And if you've seen, been on their website, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but I think the apartment leasing numbers would be, are very attractive. And I think that's something you all can be proud of with the work the city's done to, to bring that project to conclusion. And then, next slide. This was the one change that we did make in cooperation with Renee and the chamber was the swapping of the business retention and expansion efforts over to the EDO, working with existing industries. If you go back and look at the projects that have been, the ones, the big projects we've been involved with, it's been our existing companies. Eighty percent, national numbers show eighty percent of your new jobs come from your existing industry. We can, we show that very well with, with our, our growth here in the community. So, this breaks down kind of the areas of what we're doing. We have already started going out and meeting with some of our local companies, getting a feel for what's going on within the community in terms of, of their future for the year. As you can well imagine, workforce continues to be the number-one issue. And we've had that discussion with, with all the companies so far. And, and the ones we've got scheduled and will be scheduling for the rest of the year. But, workforce continues to be the, the critical issue for a lot of our companies. I think it's helping the work base, the workers, by being able, these companies are having to raise their benefits and raise their hourly rate. And we're seeing that somewhat across the board. So, I also want to thank you all. This year, our, our board number, our board members from the city. Tom Dill is our vice chairman. He'll become chairman next year. Chris Yowie is our newest appointment. He replaced Brian Richardson in January. And then Jim Trowler is your all's third candidate. So, our third commission, uh, board member. So, we're excited about that. But, twenty-twenty-five, as I said earlier, it's gonna be our tenth year. We're looking, trying to get planning, kind of a first annual meeting, if you can say it first. I've been corrected before saying a first of anything. It can't be an annual until after you have the first one, so... But, I really wanna open time up for questions from the commission.
Thank you. Any questions?
Is the Amazon facility on track?
It is. There were some issues early on with utility extensions. The weather, obviously, we had a very wet spring. The company that had that contract brought on two additional teams to work that project, and they were working around the clock. So, uh, the last discussions I had with Peter Miller, the airport manager, everything is, is pretty close to being on schedule.
Okay.
Street's done. The initial street is done. And I understand the city is working on the other streets gonna be added in, so...
There's a lot, a lot of activity going on out there. A lot of activity going on.
It is. It's been a mud hole, but it looks like it's starting to dry up a little bit.
And I'm glad you brought up the employers being a little more aggressive with their wages and benefits because, as a commission, we've done our part to provide multiple housing opportunities. And so, that's no longer gonna be a issue.
I feel very positive with what's going on. And we were out, the mayor and several of you all were out at the, the aeroplanes ribbon cutting, the chamber did. And, you know, I went through a couple of the units, and they're very nice, very nice. I know, I was down on South Ohio and could see roofing going on one of the houses down there the other day, so...
That's all coming together.
The community's responded. The community, and, and as well as the upper-income homes are, you know, moving ahead because of, you know, new lots being opened up and all that. So, I, I'd driven around a couple of months ago in some places I'd not been for a while. And I was very, very pleased with the quality of houses that were going in. And, you know, so we're working, as, as Lauren Driscoll would say, every step of that ladder is, is getting addressed. So, it's very positive.
Any other questions?
On this list of new jobs and the money brought in, what, what's the beginning range of that?
Well, most of them are, the county average wage is a little over eighteen dollars an hour now.
No, I mean, the timeframe of when these jobs were created.
Oh, okay. Well, it would depend on each one. So, uh, Schwanz, the one that pops in my mind right now, with their project, the, the two hundred and twenty jobs, twenty-five jobs, those have been added. So, they're currently, the last county we had, they were about fourteen hundred people total, the existing plan and the new. And we always gotta remember, this is only half of that building is filled. That four hundred thousand square feet, they've got one production line. They've got room for two. So, uh, and I'm gonna be out there later this month, and maybe we'll hear something more about that. Great Plains, those jobs have been, been added. All of those have been added, from what I understand. Bex is on board. One Vision, going back up the top. The last number I had on them, they were at three eighty-eight and continuing to add. They need, they need painters as well as their mechanics. GeoProbe, they did complete that, that addition of the employers. Originally, some of that investment ended up going into another building. But, they did make that initial total investment in equipment on their fifty thousand square foot addition. President's Place, uh, I'm not sure if that one's, that one's done or not. I don't think so. Pure Imagination, those are still to come. They've not started, the university has not started construction on the, the building. But, they've, they have added, I think, five people for Salina. Repco, those jobs are all, that's all completed. Let's see. Superior, uh, this is the new warehouse building that's under construction. So, those jobs are not, not added. Leelos Phase Two is done, and Phase Three is getting close. And then, Project Macintosh, Evergy, the other company that's gonna be going in. I think, I know they have been before the DRT on their project. But, at this point, the forty-five jobs that was committed, this forty-five was all Evergy. And then, we're gonna be seeing some other new jobs come along with the second, second project. Salina Destination, you'll, you know, tremendous impact from the contractors out there. And then, Amazon, those should be, most of those will be coming on before the end of the year. So, um, that does not include any of their drivers. So, that number is gonna be on top of that. I don't think they're quite sure exactly how many drivers they're gonna be hiring until really they get into delivering packages. You guys are taking it easy on me today.
Apparently so. Well, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Have a great day.
You too.
Next up is Salina Destination Inc. Leslie?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name's Leslie Bishop, executive director of Salina Downtown. I'm gonna put my stopwatch on. Before I begin, I'd like to recognize April Rickman and Diane Gebhardt, who I have the pleasure of working with every day. And then, three esteemed board members in the back, Mike Wilson, Aaron Wiedel, and John Reber. I'd like to thank them for coming today. Next slide, please. Twenty-twenty-four by the numbers. Downtown momentum is in full swing. In twenty-twenty-four, Salina Downtown proudly hosted twenty-eight events, continuing to energize our downtown district with fresh experiences and cherished traditions. Two brand-new events that we hosted last year, the Third Thursday Trivia Night and our Downtown Movie Night, were a huge hit. The trivia nights drew estimated six to eighteen teams each month. And our outdoor movie night brought in over two hundred guests to enjoy a family-friendly movie under the stars. The biggest highlight, obviously, is our largest parade of lights in our history. With a hundred and twenty-five float entries, we reached our full capacity for lineup space, a testament to this event's incredible growth. In fact, we cannot extend it beyond a hundred and twenty-five In fact, we cannot extend it beyond 125 because we've ran out of place for people to line up. With more floats comes more excitement. Sidewalks are packed with paradegoers, proving that this beloved holiday tradition only continues to shine brighter. In 2024, also launched the success of our downtown farm and art market, which generated an estimated $160 million, $160 million! $160,000 in revenue. We began the season with 10 vendors and wrapped up with an impressive 30. Our Kids Zone brought joy to over 636 children throughout the season, reinforcing that this market is truly a family destination. Our marketing efforts saw a powerful boost, thanks to our advanced partnership with Cohort. Our website traffic jumped by 53%, and our strategic Google ad buys delivered an additional 24% increase visitors to our website. Our revitalization efforts took a center stage with the SDI facade program, which is backed generously by the city of Salina with a $60,000 investment in 2024. This funding catalyzed an incredible $280,752 in private investment across six facade improvement projects, enhancing the visual vibrancy and economic potential of our downtown buildings. Next slide, please. 2024 had a remarkable season of growth, one you can see, feel, and experience, from the steady buzz of increased foot traffic to the booming success of our local restaurants and shops. 2024 and in early 2025 have marked a dynamic area of expansion. Two beloved businesses in our downtown district, Poppy &amp; Vine and Seraphim Bread, outgrew their original spaces and have moved into larger downtown locations. This is proof of their thriving presence in the community. We also celebrated the arrival of exciting new ventures in 2024, including Candelas Tacos and Tequila Mexican Restaurant, the Salina Selfie Station, adding a fresh energy and variety to our downtown experience. The momentum has only continued to grow into 2025 with the openings of Familia Toys, Jose Peppers, Griffin Records, Cup Cates, and Wally Hair Company. And the excitement doesn't stop there. We're eagerly awaiting the opening of Meddies and Bibliophiles Cakes and Things to further enrich our downtown offerings. We're especially proud of two of our farm and art market vendors, the Refillery, which is located inside of Poppy &amp; Vine, and Bibliophiles. These have made the leap from being seasonal pop-ups to becoming a permanent downtown location. Their success is a shining example of how the market is launching, is a launching pad for local entrepreneurs. The growth we're witnessing is not just in square footage or sales, it's in community, creativity, and the collective spirit of downtown Salina. Next slide, please. 2025, our plans are in motion. In 2025, we kicked off a refresh of our First Fridays, and if anybody was in downtown Salina just this past Friday, I tell you, that was what supporting local was all about. We have kicked off and revamped our First Fridays to include food, family, shopping, music, and art. And each month, it really does feel like a block party, drawing in crowds and amplifying the local vibrancy. To beat the July heat, and because 4th of July falls on a First Friday, we are going to venture a new event called Jigsaw Jam, which will be indoors at the temple, offering a creative way to connect, no pun intended, while keeping everybody cool. So it's a jigsaw puzzle competition at the temple, and it will be a paid event. The farm and art market is also booming. We started, as I mentioned, in 2024 with just 10 vendors, and with more than has tripled, with 32 already committed for 2025. And we keep getting inquiries daily for the market. On the marketing front, which is where a big jump in our 26 budget will go, we have gone digital in a big way. With the Next Tech video production and a partnership with Cohort, our ads are running strong on YouTube, boasting an impressive 63.97 view rate, which is nearly 25% above the national average. And the growth continues. We already have two facade projects have already been used, one-third of our 2025 grant funding, which is leveraging $38,000 already in 2025 in private investment to enhance downtown's visual appeal. Next slide, please. Laying the groundwork for 2025, as we look to the future of downtown Salina, we are tending to the infrastructure that supports safety, beauty, and experience. Our security camera system, we have 42 cameras downtown, were first installed nearly four years ago, and they have proven invaluable time and time again. But as technology evolves, so must we, and several cameras are approaching the end of their service life and will require replacement or maintenance, and we've identified key areas where additional coverage is needed to further enhance the security and peace of mind downtown. Our beloved holiday snowflakes have brought sparkle and cheer for years, but they are nearing retirement. Replacing them will be a multi-year effort, one that we are actively planning now. At the same time, the growing trees along Santa Fe will need additional strands of light to maintain the magical glow downtown, and which will mean increased lighting costs. But we're not stopping there. We're also reimagining our plazas, exploring new elements to surprise and delight visitors through the holiday season. On the marketing front, we're thinking big. Digital marketing is no longer optional, it's essential. With over 94% of Americans online daily, our push for digital growth is strategic, data-driven, and measurable. Through real-time analytics, we can see exactly what's working and pivot instantly. Ensuring we get the most from every marketing dollar, that is why we've been looking to expand our digital marketing budget in 2026 to stay ahead and keep downtown on top of mind. And while digital is powerful, tangible tools still matter. Our last printed downtown map was in 2022. And while the online version is current and available, there are visitors who still like to have something in hand. In 2026, we aim to produce a refreshed printed map that includes business listings, public parking lots, and time limits, because, let's be honest, we do not have a parking problem in downtown Salina. Finally, we're keeping our eyes on the horizon with some truly transformational big goals. We're still working on the digital messaging board to be at City Light Stage, a street legal utility cart for the SDI staff to use, especially when we're going from point A to point B to point C for our events, permanent building lights, and piped-in music. These have been on our requests before, they're large ticket items, but we are still continuing to work on those. And each of these requires planning and close communication with the city and the property owners, but we believe they will elevate the downtown experience to the next level. Next slide, please. From this brief presentation, it's clear that downtown Salina is experiencing exciting momentum, and Salina Downtown Inc. is proud to be at the front of that growth. Every day, our team works diligently to keep downtown on top of mind for both local visitors and visitors from across the state and the country. To continue this progress, SDI must remain active and present in the heart of our district and keep feet on the pavement and eyes on the future. For 2026, we are respectfully requesting $85,000 in facade improvement funding and $90,000 in operational support. We recognize that the challenge of running a small business in today's environment, and with the Business Improvement District seeing a huge increase in 2024 of 30%, the SDI Board, in '24, we increased our bid, or in 30%, the SDI and our Board of Directors are committed to not increasing those dues again in 2026. We are deeply aware that the work that we do, beautifying our streetscapes, supporting local business owners, driving foot traffic and creating a sense of place, would not be possible without the generous and ongoing support of the city of Salina. On behalf of our board and staff, I want to thank you for believing in downtown. We look forward to growing together and continuing to make Salina Downtown a thriving destination and a place where locals, business owners feel proud and supported. I want to thank you for your time and your continued support, and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I'm just glad to hear that video board is still on your wish list and the piped-in music, which would be a great touch, like Friday nights or holidays.
I'm working with two entities to get bids on those, I haven't received them yet.
I mean, I think it's obvious that the investment made in the downtown's paying off, obviously Star Bonds is way ahead of schedule. I'm a big believer in the facade grants, you know, as a small, small business owners have more and more trouble making it go. Insurance costs have gone up substantially, and this is a great way to, again, enhance the front of the buildings for some of the individuals. Kudos to keeping downtown clean, it's not easy all the time, she does a great job, and she's down there watering plants and blowing and stuff off the sidewalks. The only problem we have, and we're going to have to figure out, is pigeon problem again a little bit, so.
But we're not going to talk about the bad things, everything's.
That's just saying, that's not your fault.
I will mention that historically, you know, when SDI has raised BID in the past, it's been anywhere from 1% to 2%. And in '24, we made that intentional decision to raise it 30% in hopes that that would, you know, balance out those many years of not much of an improvement or increase. But as Commissioner Hoppick mentioned, the cost of doing business, especially locally with insurance and hourly wage, we're just asking again for the support of not raising those BID dues one more year. And I would like to remind you all that we didn't ask for an increase in operational or facade funding for '25. And may I just real fast read one thing that happened over the weekend. As I mentioned, First Friday was, it finally felt like everything that we've been working on came together in one perfect storm. And this is from a downtown business owner that reached out to us. "Thank you, Lesley, April, and Diane for all that you do for downtown. Everyone who played a part in yesterday's evening events, I feel I can speak for the collective group here, meaning all the downtown businesses, that the work everyone is doing makes us feel supported and valued. I chatted with several travelers and locals alike at Barilla Grill last night and received the same feedback, that the energy and vibe downtown was off the chain. Travelers were amazed at the vibrancy and joy in our downtown. I walked out front to chat with one person, ended up swept away by all the excitement, visited a few stores, and mingled and walked back into Barilla an hour later, wondering how all that happened. It's because of you and all the merchants cultivating such a special district in our city. I feel like I could go on and on. Is it everything always perfect? Absolutely not. But I believe in keeping an attitude of gratitude with all that we get to be a part of is key to navigating the hard stuff. And last night was just a delicious, in so many ways." So, thank you.
Thanks.
That all?
I had a quick question, but.
Yes, please.
On the security cameras.
Yes.
How effective are they at deterring issues and resolving issues?
Well, I think there's, when I mentioned that we have located some key areas that maybe aren't being looked at, and that's why we want to add some more cameras, but I will say that they add a deterrent, for sure. Somebody, for example, tried, you know, started one of the umbrellas on fire in Campbell Plaza, and we found, you know, we filed a police report, there was a person on the camera. And so I would say, and I think Diane, you know, looks at those cameras more than the rest of us, but it does add a huge deterrent to some of the shenanigans that were happening downtown prior to those cameras being installed. And we do work closely with the police, and they've been great, and they actually have access to our cameras now, too, so that there's, they can see, if they need to see something after hours, they can get on those cameras right away. But we have, we have found them to be very useful, especially with the loitering and people staying in one place for more than what they're allowed to be staying, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so if there's an issue and you report it, the police department can just pull it up.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time. We'll see you in downtown Salina.
Thank you. Last but not least, the Chamber of Commerce. Sorry to get squeezed in here.
Tiffany Benin, Visit Salina Director, and I've been the director for two months, but as many of you know, I've been in sports and special events working for Visit Salina for the last 30 years. And I'm very excited to have this new position. I'm also very humbled, as many of you know, I had a great mentor in Sylvia Rice, which ironically, today she would have celebrated her birthday on June 9th. So I'm a little sad, but also a lot of happy, because I hear her voice every day at work. So before we start in the slides, I did want to say, too, that I have for each of our commissioners a new 2025 volunteer t-shirt, and we hope that you will wear that proudly. I'll give it to you after the meeting, not only to help us promote Salina, but also as a thank you for what you do. We see the stacks of information that you get every meeting and every day, and the time that it takes you to review it, we know it is a big commitment, and we really appreciate that, and that is why I am so honored to present to you today about our program. Also excited that we have a brand-new team at Visit Salina. We are almost fully staffed at Visit Salina, which hasn't happened for a long time. In the room, we have started May 1st, Marcus Petty. His background is in integrative marketing, and he will be the marketing director and lead the community marketing initiative, so we're really excited to have him. We also have, not in the room, Samantha Euler, who is for the last, she's worked for the Chamber for two years, but the last four months has taken on the Sales and Services Manager position, so she works with our conventions, our groups, our ag, our military markets, also has a big shoes to fill because Joanne retired after 20 years. So Samantha's doing a great job there. And then we have, just four months in, Cassie Kaiser, who's our Destination Support Coordinator. She helps us with all of our events and has been doing just a lot of just general tourism support, working directly with our visitors. And then we also hired on May 1st, who is not here either, but he has, it is Connor LaRosa, he's our Sports and Special Events Manager, so they've had a great time sharing with him all the things that we do, and in his first month, he's already been working with the KJCCC Region Six Baseball Tournament, he was at that, he was at 5A State Tennis, where we sold a lot of t-shirts and did some things there, as well as really got his feet wet, wet May 29th and 30th with state baseball and softball. So that is our full-time staff. In addition, we have some supplemental staff, which includes Renee Duxler, our CEO at the Chamber, and we have some accounting support and also some reception support. And then, just two weeks ago, we added two summer interns, Grace Anru and Emmanuel Fakayedi. They are both MBA students at Kansas Westland, so just so excited to have a great team. And in general, we'll share with you what we do. So this slide, as you know, our main goal is to attract visitors and generate overnight stays, and that will grow our economy. And our team does this through marketing and media, sports and special events, convention services, tourism support, and research and analysis. And I'll go into depth with each of those just a little bit. Marketing and media, you guys have heard this before, we're in print ads, we're in Midwest Living, Kansas Tourism Guide, USA Travel, Kansas Magazine. We have billboards, you'll see them up and down the interstates, we have 12 of those. We have television, we do commercials, plus we do digital marketing with KSN and KWCH. And then the area that we've really expanded on is our digital marketing. And you'll notice as I go through our slides, we have a new campaign called Made For You, where we really do try to share with everyone that we have something for everyone, whether it's arts, entertainment, dining, history, just so many things that we believe visitors will enjoy, and unique experiences to what they want to enjoy. And we've been working with Cop Media, they've helped us do some placements of our digital ads, as well as Apples and Arrows has helped us come up with some of our designs, which you will see in the slides. We also do a lot of organic marketing, so local and regional news stories, we help build those, we work with travel influencers, you may have seen Joel Goldberg here and Vanessa Whiteside, there's several others that we work with. And just in general, utilizing the organic or the not fake visitor content to help share our message about Salina and all that we have to offer. We also do a lot of advocacy, we are members in the Travel Industry Association of Kansas. We also work closely with the Kansas Department of Commerce and their Travel Kansas Division. We are in several coalitions, Sports Kansas, Meet Kansas, North Central Kansas, and we advocate overall for tourism, as well as just general tourism marketing funding. Next slide.
Tiffany, I'm going to stop you, because I don't think we're being fair to you.
Okay.
This, you know, when we do this, we need to give each group so much time, and I apologize, you guys always get the last slot. I think it would be advantageous, if it's okay with you, to come back next meeting for a study session. You've got so much, it's not fair to try to cover this, and we have four minutes to our next meeting.
I understand, yes. I would appreciate that, too.
I would, if anything else, I want you to start, I want you to start over and take your time, I mean, this, so if that's okay, because we're not going to get through this, and again, it's.
I agree, and you made me cry, Tiffany.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you made you cry.
So anyway, and I think Sylvia, if you're listening, will put you first next year?
All right.
Sylvia chewed me out every year when she had to go last.
She's like, yeah, why does the new girl get the first spot?
So anyway, if that's okay, we'll bring you back next time. I didn't mean to step in front, but I could just tell.
You read my mind, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Well, if you have four minutes, I do have time to hand you your t-shirt.
We'll resume our regular meeting time at 4:00.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Southern California to Salina. That building will hold 120 personnel, of which at least 100 of those will be new jobs add to the Salina economy, and most of those are programmers. So they're currently being posted. You can find those online. They're being posted at over $100,000 jobs, and almost 100 of those. So we think this building will have a huge economic impact for the city of Salina, and we'd appreciate your positive vote on this impact. I also have Mr. Paul Parrish. He's the civil engineer on this project with Olson Engineering. If you have any detailed questions for him, he's able to answer those as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I was drove out by there a week ago and saw that construction is finally getting ready to commence. Is there a timeline on it?
There is. So we're still waiting on the NOI from KDHE. As soon as we have that, we'll be ready to start moving dirt. The goal is to have the project completed by June of '26. So it's a quick turnaround on this project. We need to have it done quickly. There are already projects funded to be done, the research to be done out of that building, so we need to get it up so we can get those projects completed.
Till a year from now, we'll be having a ribbon cutting.
That's the plan. Yes, sir.
Very good. Very nice. Any other questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? I'll bring it back to the commission.
Need to close the public hearing.
Do we have any final comments before we do that?
No.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 25-11148 vacating the north, south, and east-west public utility easements located on Block 8, no, Lot 8 in Block 1 of the Schilling subdivision number 3 in the city of Salinas, Leane County, Kansas, as depicted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance number 25-11248 vacating two platted utility easements located on Lot 8 in Block 1 of Schilling subdivision number 3 in the city of Salina. And we need a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Longby?
Aye.
Mayor Lenkowitz?
Aye.
On to the consent agenda.
Item 4.1, consider approval of the minutes of the June 2nd, 2025 meeting. Item 4.2, consider approval of resolution number 25-8298 adopting the updated FEMA/Kansas Homeland Security Region F Hazard mitigation plan. And item 4.3, consider approval of change order number 2 to project number 20029 Phase 2, Project Rise Centennial Road and Arnold Avenue improvements.
Thank you. Is there any item a commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda? Is there a member of the public that would like to comment on any item on the consent agenda? I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Lenkowitz, I move we approve consent agenda items 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read and listed. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. On to administration.
Item 5.1, 2025 general obligation bonds is three action, well, three parts. Part A is to receive the report on the bids received on the sales of bonds. Part B, to consider approval of ordinance number 25-11245 authorizing the issuance and delivery of the updated numbers, $12,315,000 principal amount of general obligation internal improvement bond, Series 2025A. And then item C is to consider approval of resolution number 25-8297 prescribing the form and details of and authorizing the delivery of $12,315,000 principal amount of general obligation internal improvement bond, Series 2025A.
Miss Beck.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. On May 12th, 2025, City Commission gave approval for us to offer for public sale our general obligation bonds that we do annually. As part of this process, we did have a Moody's credit rating. Moody's provided a credit rating on June 2nd, 2025. As part of that rating, they did note the strong operating reserves and liquidity and Salina being a regional economic hub of north central Kansas. Some of the down, the challenges that they noted was our economic metrics that fall below similarly rated AA peers. They did also note that if we had significant improvement in resident income and full value per capita and a positive economic growth ratio, that we could see an increase in our rating. The city's rating was confirmed, which was at where we were before at AA3. I did want to make one correction to the staff report. The projects listed on the second page, the second project there lists Lakeview Estates. That should be the municipal building improvements, which as we know it is a Schneider project. That name got pulled out there probably from the last staff report. The amounts are right for that, but the project name was wrong. The bids did go out today and were closed today, and Dave Artterberry is here from Stifel Nicolaus will give you a report on what those bids are and the interest rates that we provided. We also have Mitch Walter from Gilmore &amp; Bell here if you have any questions. And I'll open this up to Dave.
Thank you, Debbie, and good afternoon, everyone. Before I go into the results of sale, I did also want to touch a little bit on something Debbie had mentioned about the rating. The city has had the same rating, very good rating of AA3 since about 2014. And since that time, I think it's, I'm not biased in saying this, the city has improved a lot, both in terms of its finances and I think the expansion of its economy. The Moody's has been reluctant to give the city an upgrade primarily because of what Debbie had mentioned, and that is that your income levels and your valuation per capita is a little bit lower than a lot of the cities that might be a rating notch above you. But I think based on some of the things that have been occurring and some of the comments that were made in this last rating report, that next time through this process, we're going to start to plant the seed a little bit that we think a rating upgrade is in order. There's just been too many positive things going on in the community. But having said that, that's sort of for the future. Today, the city took bids on the $12,315,000 of general obligation bonds to fund the different improvements that were mentioned. We ended up getting in the conference room over by Debbie's office and watching the bids come in at 11 o'clock. A total of eight bids were received, which is a very, very good response on an issue of this size. The best bid that was submitted was submitted by Robert W. Baird. They actually headed up a syndicate that probably included about 10 or 15 firms in total. Their bid was to purchase the bonds at a true interest cost, I think you should have this in front of you, of 4.084860%. The cover bid, the firm offering the next lowest interest rate was a firm called The Baker Group, and they were at about 4.21%. So that's quite a spread between the best bid and the cover bid. The bid by Robert W. Baird, it was reviewed, it was verified to be mathematically correct. They provided the required good faith deposit. So everything appeared to be in order. We resized the issue just to make sure that the city was getting all of the money that it needed and not too much money. When you actually authorized the sale of the bonds a few weeks ago, you authorized up to $12,750,000. And as was mentioned, the final par amount is $12,315,000. So because of the structure of the bid, we were able to reduce the amount of bonds issued, but still generate all the money that you need.
Is it 315 or 320?
315.
Okay.
Yeah, an initial estimate was 320, but the ultimate, the final number was $12,315,000. So I think that's a good summary. And interest rates, don't ask me what they were a year ago or two years ago. They are higher now than they were. But also by getting eight good bids, that's an indication that there's a strong interest for bonds for the city of Salina. Getting that interest rate particularly from Baird that was considerably lower than the next cover bid says you got a really good bid. Welcome, any questions you might have or any comments about the process?
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
One question, and I know before we have, you know, when interest rates dropped, we were able to go in and refinance. What type of refinancing ability we have on any bonds that we do currently?
We did look at that several weeks before the sale, and at that time, there wasn't any opportunity. You've got some bonds outstanding that have interest rates on them that unfortunately, they're callable now, so you could refinance them, but the rates on them are lower than what the prevailing rates are. These bonds that you just issued today, if interest rates, you know, trend down to more, maybe more historical averages, there's probably going to be an opportunity to refinance those.
But that was my question, if they had the ability to be refinanced?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Not that this is a bad rate. We're all spoiled by what's gone on for the last how many years, so.
When you look at the old bonds, I went back and I looked, and a few years ago, the interest rate was about 1.7%, so.
Can you explain the bond rating a little further?
Sure.
What is our target? What would we?
You know, right now, the city is a AA3, and the categories go AAA, AA, A, and then BAA. Within the AAA is just AAA. There's no further designations.
That's the top.
Within the AA category, there's AA1, AA2, and AA3. And you're at AA3. And so the next move up would be AA2. And that's what I think, you know, next time around in the rating process, we're going to try to push a little bit to see if you might be able to get up there. Unfortunately, the things that they cite as holding you back are your income levels and your valuation per capita, and those are just things that you can't just change immediately. But, you know, hopefully maybe with, you know, the continued economic development, the KARIS project, the new housing that's becoming available, maybe some of these things will start working towards improving some of those ratios. The difference between AA3 and AA2, it's not a ton in interest rate. It might be like a 0.05 to a 0.1% lower rate that you might get by moving up a notch. I think as much as anything, a rating upgrade would just sort of be a nice, you know, feather in your cap.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Sir?
Any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
So we do have, as Nikki mentioned, two action items, approval of ordinance number 25-11245, and also resolution 25-8297.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Lenkowitz, I move we approve ordinance number 25-11245 authorizing the issuance and delivery of $12,315,000 of principal of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2025A.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance number 25-11245 authorizing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $12,750,000.
It's actually $12,315,000 because we've actually got the amount.
Okay. We didn't want to, so I'll just. Scratch that to $12,315,000. Principal amount of the general obligation internal improvement bond, Series 2025-A. And we need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Longby?
Aye.
Mayor Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Mayor Lenkowitz, I move we approve resolution number 25-8297 prescribing the form and details and authorizing the delivery of $12,315,000 of general obligation internal improvement bond, Series 2025A.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of resolution number 25-8297 prescribing the form and details of and authorizing the delivery of $13,315,000 of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2025-A.
And that was $12,315? Not 13?
Did I?
Yeah, you said 13.
My mistake.
Okay.
Apparently, that's just going to be a rough number today.
Those are big numbers.
So let's scratch that. It'll be $12,315,000 of general obligation internal improvement bond, Series 2025-A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, passes 5-0. On to 5.2.
Item 5.2, consider awarding a change order for dog park construction at Barclay Park to Poton Construction, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $132,449.33.
Mr. Hammond.
Thank you, Mayor Lenkowitz, and members of the City Commission, Jeff Hammond, Parks and Recreation Director. Today, I bring before you a matter concerning an expansion to our very popular and successful dog park, Barclay Park. February 10th of this year, the City Commission awarded a contract to Poton Construction, Incorporated, for constructing a dog park at John Parker Jr. Park, near the Carver Center and the animal shelter. The project is currently underway and has made progress. We're currently waiting for the pavilion structures to be, to arrive in Salina, and should be at the end of this month, and would be going up sometime in July. A few years back, animal services staff recognized a project from feedback from the community relating to Barclay Park. It was adding more shade structures to provide more shade and to expand and improve Barclay Park. Most recently, staff and I, myself and my staff, have been working with some user group that frequents Barclay Park, and we kind of helped develop what they want to see relating to a shade structure, relating to extra gathering space, which we have had conversations with the governing body about. And that's something I'm bringing you today. In recent discussions with Poton Construction, Parks and Rec staff discussed a proposed change order for their current contract for similar dog park work for Barclay Park. This change order seeks to enhance the Barclay Dog Park for humans and dogs alike by adding further gathering spaces in shaded areas. The proposed work includes the additional gathering space of 880 square feet of concrete in each of the three sections for a total of 2,640 square feet of additional concrete space. And that would ensure more space for the dog park community to gather and better transition from the entry and exit into the dog park. And also where that new pavement would be for that gathering space, there would be a shade structure installed in that area. That's 12-foot by 20-foot, they're metal pavilions, metal roof, so they wouldn't be taken down like a shade structure would and put back up every year. It'd be year-round shade at Barclay Park, complete with concrete footers. That would require by the engineering requirements for that shade structure and would provide additional shade and improve the quality of time spent in the park. Attached in your packet is the quote that Poton Construction provided, which was $126,142.22. And with a 5% construction contingency, the total would be $132,449.33. I did reach out to a comparable quote, AFCO LLC, which is a company that represents many park brands, playgrounds, structures. They had a, their quote was $204,585 for all three sections, so it made the most sense for staff to look at the change order with Poton Construction, who's already under contract with the city of Salina. A few things before I get to my final notes, some other updates for Barclay Park. You know, I wanted to, there's been other, other improvements we're trying to pursue at Barclay Park relating to the turf. As you're, as I've talked about before, rotational maintenance at Barclay Park. And we close a section of Barclay Park on a yearly basis. We open and close those sections in the month of June approximately, and we do put up signage when opening and closings occur. When the sections close, we perform turf maintenance, which includes overseeding Bermuda grass, which is a warm-season grass. This will be watered in with the irrigation system that's present. We have updated recently our attempts to get after that native grass that's in that, in our soil here or in our turf system in Salina, which is called Little Barley. And the seeds in that Little Barley get into dogs' paws. So we did apply a pre-emergent for that last early fall. It had an effect, but it wasn't a one-and-done effect. Little Barley is still present, and we're going after that, and we've actually proposed to the city manager to increase that effort to go after that turf and get a good stand of grass and grass only. So this fall, we'll apply a pre-emergent, water that in, we'll spray for broadleaf weeds in August or early September. It'll need to be closed for three days, get that to allow it to water in, and then we'll reapply again in the spring for broadleaf weeds and using the pre-emergent for that Little Barley as well. So we're taking, going to a two-step approach, I guess, to try to address that. But I want to emphasize that that Little Barley is so present in our turf system citywide that it will take a few years for us to get that under control. Last item I want to bring your attention to is something else we talked about relating to Barclay Park. We are pursuing a additional fence project, so we can add a fourth section. We are currently designing that and getting the specifications we want to have a contractor look at, and that's in process right now. Relating to the item on the agenda, some final considerations. Like I said, we have had this project in our 10-year subCIP for the Animal Services Revenue Fund for some time. There's an allocation of $150,000 for shade structures project at Barclay Park. It is from the fund balance of the Animal Services Revenue Fund, and if this proposed project is approved, we would have a balance remaining of $273,200 remaining in the fund balance for the Animal Services Revenue Fund. Recommended actions today, approve the change order, amend the change order, approve the change order with amendments is what I'm trying to say. Three, postpone consideration of this to a future date and time, or four, vote to decline the change order. Documentation you have in your packet is the, kind of the site view, Poton Construction's quote, and the existing agreement with Poton Construction for the work they're doing at the dog park at John Parker Jr. Park. I'll stand for any questions that you might have, and thank you. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Hammond?
On the, the Little Barley's been the hot topic lately. Has there been any other methods of controlling that looked at other than pre-emergent?
Fire.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
I'm being facetious, that would work, but we would not do that. Our land, we have not, I think when we posed, I haven't personally heard the answer, but we have posed that question to our landscaping crew, and that's the method of attack that they're going after, is using the pre-emergent that's designed for, that has Little Barley on the list of things that treats. But we certainly can look at other options and see if there's other options out there.
I guess I'm thinking of hitting it with herbicide before it seeds out, and then burn it.
There was certainly, that is an option to kill everything, because we would be killing everything that herbicide would come in contact with, including the grass. But then you're also exposing that raw soil to every weed that comes into contact with that. Getting a healthy stand of grass is better protection in our mind to preventing that Little Barley from taking over, becoming available. That's why we chose the pre-emergent method. So if we kill everything off, then it's just open canvas for every other weed that could be present in the soil, including Little Barley. And so we're going, that's why we use the chemical method, so we don't impact the existing grass. And, but I certainly can ask our landscaping staff to give us some other, to do some more research and see what else is out there.
Well, I'd just like to show appreciation to the user groups that brought this project forward, that I don't think it'd be happening without that. And that is a very well-used facility, and it's important we keep it up and.
I agree.
I don't have any question on this. In fact, I do have a question on the new cell, and I don't know if I should ask that now or wait till after we vote, so we don't get them confused. Tell me what you prefer I do.
I think it's up to commissioners.
On the, on the new cell that you stated that, you know, you're designing, do you have any idea when that'll go to, will be designed, when it'll go out to bid, and when you anticipate construction? Because sometimes we talk about things and they get moved out, and I'd kind of like to have a.
It's my intent to have that finished this month, June, and have it looked at by contractors by the end of the month. We are looking at a section that would go to the north of the existing three pod structure, three sections. And it won't be the same size because we have some, you know, tree obstructions, and plus the slope starts giving way on the east side. Each section is about 0.66 acres, so we're looking at about 0.5 acres of an additional pod. We got to figure out a water line to make sure we get a water bowl in there, and then the concrete, so that we just, it's not, in the terms of complexity, it's not super-complex, but we also want to make sure we have a contractor looking at something that they understand.
Well, I had my doubts when we built Barclay Park as to how much it would be used, and I continue to be amazed at the amount of traffic I see up there. So I think it's, this, these parks like this are very beneficial to the community, and I'm glad to see that we're, we're making an investment in them, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I would add that it's just as much a social venue for the people as it is the dogs.
Right. I think just based on my feedback interaction with previous staff that some are no longer here, that they designed it for dogs. They weren't really designing it for the human factor. And I think that's some of the improvements that we're proposing recently is trying to incorporate that human factor, of how people enter, how they exit, where they socialize, so.
And they'd really like a restroom.
They'd probably like happy hour, too, but I don't think they're going to get that either, so.
Thank you.
Is there a member of the public that would wish to comment on this item?
Linda Reynolds, big surprise. I want to thank Mr. Hammond's for everything he's done and listening to us and everything. Do you mean the new dog park will be on the south side, not on the north side, or did you change it? You didn't tell us that.
I didn't tell you that. We, we're looking at the north.
Okay, okay. You need to keep us in the loop. The only thing I want to say is, when does the new concrete and whatnot structures begin with Poton? Do you have any idea? Because my concern is, in the little dog park, you've got dips that are this big coming off the concrete, that somebody's going to fall and break a leg or sprain something. I took a shovel up there and tried to fix it, but it wouldn't work. So that's a concern, if that doesn't get done right away, that maybe we could have some soil brought in and put on there to, the rain really washed it out. It was bad before, and I don't know how it is in the big dog park, but thank you, Mr. Hammond. Hammond.
Thank you.
You need to keep us in the loop.
You'll get on that tomorrow, right, Mr. Hammond?
I'll bring it back to the commission.
May I move, we approve the change order for dog park construction for improvements at Barclay Park to Poton Construction Incorporated in the amount of $126,142.22, with a $6,307.11 contingency for total project authorization not to exceed $132,449.33, authorizing the city manager to approve the change order to the existing contract with Poton Construction Incorporated.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for approval of the change order for dog, dog park construction for improvements at Barclay Park to Poton Construction Incorporated in the amount of $126,142.22, with a 5% contingency for total project authorization not to exceed $132,449.33, and authorizing the city manager to approve the change order to the existing contract with Poton Construction Incorporated. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Pass this 5-0. On to development business.
Item 6.1, consider approval of ordinance number 25-11249 approving the Santa Fe Showdown as a special event, and authorizing the consumption of alcoholic liquor within the boundaries of barricaded street right-of-way areas at such event.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Now we're going to talk about alcohol. We have a request before the commission to approve a special event that would take place in a barricaded street right-of-way, and the event is the Santa Fe Showdown. And Kansas Legislature is always tinkering with the liquor laws, but essentially since 2012, they, or 2010, they have allowed the consumption of alcohol at a special event that's held on public streets, alleys, roads, sidewalks, or highways that are closed to motor vehicle traffic when a temporary liquor permit has been issued. And so what used to be called a special event permit is now called a temporary permit for a street, road, or sidewalk event by Kansas ABC. And so the organizers of the Santa Fe Showdown have filed a request for this year, and the state statute requires that every licensee selling or allowing the consumption of alcohol is liable for violating the laws governing the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquors. And so no one can remove any alcoholic liquor from inside the boundaries of the special event area. But a change in 2019 authorizes possession and consumption of alcohol from outside sources with the permission of the licensee. So that means that if the person holding the special event license authorizes people to essentially BYOB for that event, that is allowed, provided that the streets and sidewalks where the special event will be held are closed. There's a defined geographic area in which the event will be held. The entity providing alcohol will be identified, there's hours, and there's a general safety and security plan. And so the state law requires that these events be approved through an ordinance by the Salina City Commission. So Calvin Calp of Calvin's Customs and Hot Rod Repairs has submitted an application for a state license and an alcoholic beverage special event retailer's permit for Santa Fe Showdown to be held on Friday, July 25. And the purpose of the event is to provide a event for participants and fans of the KOA Lead Sled Car Show, where people can gather, look at car show vehicles, listen to music, and have fun. It's a free event that would be held in the 300 block of North Santa Fe Avenue from Elm Street to just north of Pine Street. And so there will be food trucks, porta-potties. Will there, what will not be part of the event this year is fireworks. So there's, there's no plan to add fireworks to this year's event. But this is consistent with last year's event and with prior events that the city commission has approved. And so Mr. Calp is requesting governing body approval of an ordinance that identifies the Santa Fe Showdown as a special event that authorizes the possession and consumption of alcohol within the boundaries of the barricaded public street at that event. And so your options this afternoon would be to approve Santa Fe Showdown as a special event and authorize the consumption of alcoholic liver, liquor within the barricaded area on North Santa Fe. You could approve the event and the ordinance with any changes you wanted to make to the location, size, or date of the event. You could postpone consideration of this request to acquire additional information, or you could decline to approve the ordinance and deny the approval of the proposed special event. So if the ordinance would be denied, then they would not be, the state would not be authorized to issue a, a special event permit for it. So with that, I'd be open to any questions, but this event has occurred for multiple years in the past, and last year, they, they had a fireworks display over to the east, but with the construction of new buildings over there, they're not planning to do that this year.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Andrew? Thank you.
No, this event gets bigger and bigger every year. Does the applicant, are they responsible for all the cleanup?
They are, under the terms of their, their special event permit, so they're out, they're out in a public street, so they are obliged to leave it as they found it, in terms of barricades, trash. They're supposed to have trash receptacles, they should pick those up or empty them. But it's not, it should not be up to anybody else but the event organizer to clean up after the event.
And they've, well, I think Ms. Diane has a comment here, so she can answer my question.
Hi, I'm Diane Schbowski, and I work at Calvin's Customs and Hot Rod Repair. And yes, we do, like, they think that they've allotted us to like 1 o'clock in the morning to clean up, because the event ends at 11:00 PM, so they give us two hours to clean up. And Hometown Disposal, they bring a big, I don't know what they call that, big dumpster or whatever, but we have it by the food truck, so it's kind of in the middle, so, you know, any, and then we have trash cans everywhere, so people, you know, can put their trash in various places. So it's kind of a, it's not a bad cleanup, but you know, they give us to 1 o'clock to clean. And we also have volunteers for security to keep an eye on underage drinking. So that's also something that we take care of too, and hold responsibility for.
So you have a whole cleanup crew, all in the...
Yes, all, everybody that helps with the security also helps us clean up and everything. So we got probably, I want to say last year, it was over a dozen people or more, 20, I think maybe, that helped with everything, with the security and cleaning up at the end and everything, so...
And how many, how many do you, people?
Last year, I want to say there was over 1,100 or 1,300 or something, they were guessing, and I was just like, oh, I was sitting there selling t-shirts, I had no idea, I just saw a lot of people having a good time with the 80s rock band. We're having the same band this year too, so it's going to be fun 80s music again. And we haven't had any problems, no fights, no anythings. I mean, maybe dogs pooping in the street, but we shovel that up and toss that in the dumpster.
All right. Very nice. Thank you. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? I'll bring it back to the commission.
Move approval of ordinance number 25-11249 approving the Santa Fe Showdown as a special event, and authorizing the consumption of alcoholic liquor within the boundaries of barricaded street right-of-way areas at such event.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance number 25-11249 approving the Santa Fe Showdown as a special event and authorizing the consumption of alcohol, alcoholic liquor within the barricaded area proposed on North Santa Fe Avenue. All those in favor? Oh, actually, we need a roll call vote, don't we?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Longby?
Aye.
Mayor Lenkowitz?
Aye. On 6.2.
Item 6.2, consider approval of ordinance number 25-11250 approving the Feast on the Fay as a special event, and authorizing the consumption of alcoholic liquor within the boundaries of barricaded public street right-of-way at such event.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you. This is a very similar event, just occurring in a different location, in a different time of the year, but it's subject to the same permitting and ordinance requirement. And this is a request that was received from Local Food Works Foundation to hold Feast on the Fay. And this is a dinner that occurs in the, in the middle of the block on South Santa Fe, and they have submitted a special event permit application. And the event is scheduled to play, take place on Saturday, September 13, 2025. And as we've indicated, this has been held pretty much continuously since 2018, except for 2020. And all the events have taken place on Santa Fe, but they haven't always been on the same block. But this year's event is planned to take place on the same block as last year's event, which is the 200 block of South Santa Fe. And the event is a dinner within Santa Fe Avenue between Spillman Plaza and Mulberry Street to promote local farmers and locally grown, produced food. And so the event organizers are proposing to close Santa Fe to through traffic between Walnut and Mulberry for that event, which again will take place from 5:30 to 8:30 on Saturday, September 13th of this year. And so the Local Food Works Foundation is similarly requesting that you prove an ordinance that identifies the Feast on the Fay as a qualifying special event, and authorizing the sale, possession, and consumption of alcoholic liquor within the boundaries of the barricaded public area at this event. And so your options this afternoon would be to approve ordinance 25-11250, approving this as a special event, and authorizing the consumption of alcoholic liquor within the barricaded area proposed on South Santa Fe Avenue during the event. You could approve the ordinance and the event with any modifications to the location, size, or date, or time of the event. You could postpone consideration of this request to a future meeting date to allow additional information to be provided. Or you could decline to approve the ordinance and deny the approval of the event. Again, without an ordinance in hand, the state alcohol and beverage control will not issue a temporary permit without an ordinance showing that the city commission has approved the event. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. I do believe we have a representative of Local Food Works Foundation.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Andrew? If the applicant would like to come up and say a few words, more than welcome to.
Hello, everybody. My name is Rachel Andre, and I'm on the Local Food Works Foundation board. As was stated, this has been a long-running event, and all the proceeds go towards a grant that the Local Food Works Foundation puts on every year, and the grant goes towards a local food producer or farmer. A few of the previous recipients of the grant have been Shroommates, they grow and sell mushrooms locally. And there before that, I believe, was Seraphim Bread, who had a new awning put on the front door of his business. And then this past year, it was awarded to Salt and Light, who is a local farmer homestead for additions and fixing of their high tunnels.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? I'll bring it back to the commission.
May I approve, or I move that we approve ordinance number 2511250, approving the Feast on the Fay as a special event, and authorizing the consumption of alcoholic liquor within the barricaded area proposed on South Santa Fe Avenue during the event.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance number 25-11250, approving the Feast on the Fay as a special event, and authorizing the consumption of alcoholic liquor within the barricaded area proposed on South Santa Fe during the event. Need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Longby?
Aye.
Mayor Lenkowitz?
Aye. On 6.3.
Item 6.3, consider approval of ordinances numbered 25-11246, amending section 42-59 of the zoning ordinance to eliminate all conflicts with Chapter 6, Articles 4 and 5 of the Salina Code, and number 25-11247, amending section 42-306, subsection 2 of the C4, Central Business District Use Limitations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Not a very exciting or glamorous topic, but something that was something necessary to, to go through our ordinances and try to eliminate duplications and overlaps for members of the public, trying to utilize spaces in the downtown area. And so we've, we've provided you with some background reports, but the planning staff was tasked with going through the zoning ordinance and identifying things that might require duplicate reviews or conflict, conflicted with provisions in the recently adopted ACE District and special event ordinances. And so in, in 2019, and then a pause in 2020, and then picked up again in, in 2022, one of the things that various groups were working on was try to find a way to combine various different permits and overlapping event types into a single special event permit, and allow the application or coordination of other types of permits to be done through the special event permit process. And so that was done for a number of other code chapters, but not for chapter 42, which involves the involvement and input from the planning commission. So this was recently initiated by the planning commission, and so what we did is, is went through the temporary use regulations. And I guess a, a classic example of that would be the, the downtown art and farmers' market, where under our ordinance required both a review by the planning commission for a temporary use permit and a special event permit by staff. And part of the reason for that is that you cannot use a downtown public parking lot for use other than parking without a special event permit. And so it, it didn't seem to make sense, if you need a special event permit to use a public parking lot for a use other than parking, it didn't make sense to necessarily involve a different application and a different review by the planning commission. So that's an example of one of the things that was eliminated. And then the other conflict that was identified is, for years, the downtown zoning district has not allowed outdoor merchandise display or sales, except for an annual sidewalk sale that's usually held in, in July. And part of the reason that no outdoor display was allowed was because most of the outdoor spaces downtown are public right-of-way and not private property. But we have the ACE District now, which now allows merchants to have a retail bubble out on the public sidewalk, and that directly conflicts with the zoning code. So the amendments that are being proposed would eliminate that. So we've clarified that if you're doing things on a downtown public parking lot, that does not require a temporary use permit either from staff or the planning commission. If you're doing a food truck or other mobile food vendor on a public parking lot, that does not require a separate approval, but just a special event permit. And then for whatever reason, in 2016, there was an... And then for whatever reason, in 2016, there was an amendment passed that allowed outdoor open-air markets, farmers' markets, to operate on church parking lots, and we have one on Emmanuel Forest Square on East Cloud. But when staff looked at the published code on our municipal code, we found that that particular amendment did not get published in the municipal code. So this action would reinstate that back into the code. And then there was one reference in the code that referred to the Salinas Lee County Health Department, and that work is now undertaken by the Kansas Department of Agriculture. And we deleted all references to sidewalk sales because that is now addressed with the outdoor merchandise bubble. So these, these changes were reviewed by the planning commission. They recommend unanimously that these updates be made. And again, the, the goal was to try to eliminate any conflicts between what we say in our zoning ordinance and what we allow for through our special event permit review in our ACE District, which applies just within the downtown area. So we've got two ordinances. One deals with the temporary use portion, the other one deals with the C four zoning district portion. So if you concur with the planning commission's recommendation, you could approve ordinance twenty five eleven forty six. That amends the temporary use regulations in section forty two fifty nine. And then if you approve ordinance twenty five eleven forty seven, that would amend the use limitations in the C four zoning district to eliminate those conflicts in the C four zoning. You could postpone consideration of this set of text amendments to a future meeting date to allow additional information to be provided by staff, or you could maintain the status quo and decide that nothing should be changed at this time, and a motion should be made to deny both or either ordinance. So with that, staff would stand for any questions. We really just view this as a, as a follow-up cleanup item. And again, the goal is to not have people who are trying to schedule or use public spaces downtown be subject to multiple reviews.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Andrew?
Yeah, I have one. It seems like this opens up a lot. And I guess my concern is like a traveling vendor selling T-shirts or whatever, would they be able to just pull into a public lot and set up shop?
No, because the ordinance says that you cannot use a public parking lot for any other purpose than parking without a special event permit. So if somebody set up in a public parking lot at Santa Fe and Ash and started selling T-shirts, I would expect a police officer to ask the individual whether they have a special event permit from the city to be there, and if they did not, then they would be asked to move along.
So it'd still need the event permit, but wouldn't need to...
Yes, because it is, it's owned by the public, it belongs to the public, and you need permission to be there. Same thing would apply on private property. And we've, we've had that. That's the other side of the coin with the temporary use permit, but we've had people setting up and selling on private property without the knowledge of the owner. And so we do require the owner's consent to set up and sell on commercial property.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public wish to comment on this item? I'll bring it back to the commission.
There, I move we approve ordinance number two five one 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 four six, amending the temporary use regulations in section forty two dash five nine, and ordinance number two five dash one 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 four seven, amending the use limitations in the C four zoning district.
I think we need to break that up into two separate motions.
Yeah, it kind of sounds like it does.
Yeah. So I'll just go with, well, I need a second on the, the first motion you made.
I move, I second that we approve ordinance number twenty five dash one 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 four six, amending the temporary use regulations in section forty two dash five nine.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second for approval of ordinance number twenty five dash one one two four six, amending section forty two dash fifty nine of the zoning ordinance to eliminate all conflicts with chapter six, articles four and five of the Salina Code. Go ahead.
And this may have been said, and I may have missed it, is the ordinance number one one two four six or one 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 four six? Because in the blue sheet, it's one one one.
Yeah, the agenda has one number, and the blue sheet has a different number.
Yeah.
It should be one one two four six. I think there was a typo on the blue sheet. I must have missed it.
Okay, thank you.
So I read the correct ordinance number?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Just verifying. So we need a roll call vote, please, and thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Longby?
Aye.
Mayor Lenkowitz?
Aye.
And entertain another motion.
There, I move we approve ordinance number two five dash one 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 four seven, amending the use limitations in the C four zoning district.
I think that's actually one one two four seven, correct?
Yes.
It had the same thing.
Okay, I'll make sure I read the...
Okay.
We have a motion in a second for approval of ordinance number two five dash one one two four seven, amending of section forty two dash three oh six subsection two of the C four district use limitations. And another roll call vote, please, and thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Longby?
Aye.
Mayor Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Onto six point four.
Item six point four, consider approval of ordinance number two five dash one one two four four, repealing and replacing sections thirteen dash one oh one and thirteen dash one oh four of the Salina City Code pertaining to equal opportunity and unlawful housing practices.
Ms. Martin?
Hello. Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm, I'm Michelle Martin, City of Salina Community Relations Supervisor, and I'm here today to discuss some proposed amendments to section, city ordinances thirteen one oh one and thirteen one oh four. Just as a way of brief background for those of you who may not know, but chapter thirteen in the city code is really what pertains to prohibitions on discrimination, among other things. But that's the biggest portion of chapter thirteen. It's employment, public accommodations, and housing, all those types of discrimination complaints. With regards specifically to housing discrimination, we actually have a contract called a cooperative agreement with HUD to act in HUD's stead as the city of Salina. So we are acting on HUD's behalf whenever we have a housing or address a housing discrimination complaint. And in order to do that, we, it is a required part of that agreement and that, the way we work with HUD, that our city code be substantially equivalent to the Fair Housing Act as determined by HUD. Through the course of some things, we kind of found there's a little discrepancy right now that that's what this, we're here today to try and correct that and make us more like the Fair Housing Act. And it's kind of confusing because it's exemptions within exemptions, but to try and make it as simple as possible, what we are trying to do is there are two main exemptions in the act called a single-family housing, or single-family sales. If you're, if you own a single-family home and you make a sale, you're exempt under the act with some exceptions. And then there's also the Mrs. Murphy's exemption, which is basically your boarding house when a landlord actually lives in the property. So those are two primary exemptions under the act. Those exemptions have exemptions to exemptions, like all good federal regulation does, right? The way we originally had that worded, it made ours exemption to the exemptions broader, and what we're trying to do is make that more in line with the Fair Housing Act. So it only is exempted when it's exempted under the Fair Housing Act itself. So with that said, what we've done, what we are proposing before you to do today is to take portions of the language under thirteen one oh four and move it under thirteen one oh one. So everything in thirteen, the change to thirteen one oh four is striking out a section, and then you have to renumber and do that. And then the change in thirteen oh one is to make it more narrow so that those exemptions don't apply to everything. They only apply to that section, thirteen one oh one, with the exception, within the exception in paragraph three. But that's essentially what we're trying to do today, and it's all in order to make us substantially equivalent to the Fair Housing Act. With that said, I really don't have any other reason for coming forward. If we don't, I, I do think it's worth noting, though, if we don't do this, then we run the risk of not being substantially compliant, substantially equivalent, and then going forward, they may not approve our cooperative agreement. I can't guarantee one way or another, but that's the risk you run if we don't make this change today. So with that, I stand for any questions that the Commissioners might have. And I would ask that you adopt the ordinance twenty five one one two four four, if I got it right.
Yes.
Twenty one, and I'd ask that you adopt that today.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Martin?
No, it's just something you have to read about three or four times to... I won't even say for it to make sense, but to understand what's being asked. Okay.
I have a question. Are, are we one of few cities in the state of Kansas that actually has a, a human relations commission?
Well, I'm not sure about the Human Relations Commission, but we're one of two that have this agreement with HUD. So most entities don't have this agreement with HUD, only us and Lawrence.
Okay, that was my, maybe that's where I was confused. Because, because I guess what I was getting at is if we didn't have this, then if someone had a discrimination issue, they would have to go to the state of Kansas and wouldn't be able to take care of that.
Most likely, that's what most of the other, most of the other entities do, is they have...
Because of what we're doing, we're able to handle that.
Yes, and, and we are compensated from HUD to, to work on their behalf.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? I'll bring it back to the commission.
Move that we adopt ordinance number twenty five dash one one two four four.
Sir.
Motion in a second for approval of ordinance number twenty five dash one one two four four, repealing and replacing sections thirteen dash one oh one and thirteen dash one oh four of the Salina City Code pertaining to equal opportunity and unlawful housing practices. And another roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Longby?
Aye.
Mayor Lenkowitz?
Aye.
And on to six point five.
Item six point five, consider approval of ordinance number two five dash one one two five one, reorganizing chapter five alcoholic beverages of the Salina Code, including the addition of a proposed new code section five dash thirty-three, which would establish a common consumption area in downtown Salina.
As Mr. Andrew's coming, uh...
Thank you for doing, go ahead.
I believe this will be your last item with the city commission. Is that correct?
I believe, unless there's something I don't know about, this would be the last, this would be the last item I would be presenting to the city commission.
And how many items have you brought?
Well, I told the planning commission that I had attended seven hundred and sixty planning commission meetings. And so I haven't counted, but I would think it's fair to say I've probably written and presented more blue sheets than any person who's worked for the city of Salina.
And how many years will it?
Well, it will be thirty-eight and a quarter.
Thirty-eight and a quarter.
Commendable. My introduction to you, Mr. Andrew, was when I started on the planning commission roughly, I think roughly nine years ago, and it's just been an honor and a pleasure just dealing with you over the years. So thank you. I'll let you get off your job, sorry.
Our motto is to try to be prepared, and that's what we've tried to do here. Unfortunately, we're, we're doing some fairly in-depth stuff here, and so what we're gonna do is I'm gonna give you an overview of how we have tried to reorganize our alcohol code. What we have observed is that there's been a lot of different cooks in the stew who have written individual amendments, usually in response to the, oh, the Kansas Legislature changed this, the Kansas Legislature changed that, they've added this, they've subtracted this. And we write code amendments to respond to that, but we've never really looked at the code in its entirety. And so what we tried to do was to look at the code and try to look at it from a user's standpoint and try not to substantively change anything, but to reorganize it so anybody who wants to find something related to what they're interested in can have some sense of how it's, it's put together. And so we, we cited some examples in 2010, which we mentioned in the previous item. The legislature passed a law allowing for the consumption of alcoholic liquor on public streets, sidewalks, and alleys. That resulted in a 2012 ordinance that was passed that allowed for special event temporary permits and approved by the governing body. And then in 2014, we had, added an ordinance that allowed for sidewalk dining in the downtown area, which again allowed for consumption of alcoholic beverages on the public right of way if you were in a designated area. And then Mr. Hennessy worked on a clarifying amendment in 2023, where he went through all the different types of city-owned property and tried to organize into a table classifications of the different public properties, locations where alcohol's permitted, locations where it's permitted with special permission, or locations where it's not permitted. And so the other thing it did was state that you can't have open containers on public property unless it's listed as a permitted site, and also restricted the use of glass containers on public property. So we tried not to change any of those things and, and purposely did not. But the code is kind of disjointed. It's never really been organized into individual articles by subject. We started working with this on a, in 2020, and first of all, we had the outbreak of COVID that can, canceled our steady session, and then one of Mr. Bankston's associates decided he'd rather be a judge than work for Clark Mize, and so he stopped working with us on this. So we have, we have picked it up from that, and so on page two of our report, we note that our outline, so we've, we've started with general provisions that apply to all providers of alcohol. And we found that we had definitions in four different sections of chapter five, and so we've taken all the definitions and put them in one place. And we tried to organize things by whether you were on public or private property. And item three there is a outline of allowances for common consumption areas. Then number, article three, deals with private property. And so I know that I was reading the code, and I was reading sections on retail liquor stores, and then all of a sudden it had a couple sections about cereal malt beverage retailers. And so we've, we've broken it down to separate. A CMB would be somebody like a convenience store that just has a CMB license. Then you have retailers would be a retail liquor store, then drinking establishments, and then private clubs. Then we've added a section for caterers. And the reason we did that was that we found that most cities in Kansas license, or at least register, have a registered list of caterers, and we have a lot of caterers who do special events or do temporary events. And without a license or any kind of registry, we don't know who they are or anything about them, and we can't really educate them about local requirements. And so we think it's important to have a local registry or list of licensed caterers so we can have communication with them, particularly about special events. And then we added an article dealing with the issuance of temporary permits, which we discussed earlier in the agenda. And so it was back in 2017 that the legislature passed a bill. And so it was back in 2017 that the legislature passed a bill. The first bill they passed allowed for what was called temporary entertainment districts, and they created that in response to Wichita hosting the NCAA basketball tournament, and they wanted to be able to have activity on the streets there, but it was limited to just a short duration of time and not something that was year-round. Then in 2017, they amended it again to not put time limits on it, and so it allowed for liquor to be consumed during prescribed times in public streets and sidewalks in a common consumption area that was clearly marked out, but it required that all public streets or roadways within a common consumption area be closed to vehicular traffic. Well, most cities don't want to have their, have a 365-day-a-week common consumption area and have the street have to be closed all the time. And so in 2023, the legislature amended that requirement and lifted the requirement that streets had to be closed to vehicular traffic, and this resulted in almost an explosion of cities adopting common consumption areas, including Hayes, Topeka, Emporia, and DeSoto. Most recently, Manhattan is looking at creating a common consumption area on Points Avenue, and Lawrence is also looking into it, although they were looking at doing it on a pilot or one-year basis. So our code's already in, has that in place that allows for the consumption of alcoholic beverage or possession of an open container on public streets within a common consumption area designated by the governing body, except that no alcoholic liquor may be consumed inside vehicles within a common consumption area. So this provides you with the authority to establish one, but it takes separate action by you to create the common consumption area and designate its boundaries. But we have created and drafted a proposed Section 533 that would be inside the large draft that you have in front of you, and that section would allow for the creation of a common consumption area where individuals could consume alcoholic beverages outside of licensed drinking establishments seven days a week, 365 days a year, and it would not be tied to a specific special event or events. And it would be open daily from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. in the downtown area, and we have attached a map of what that common consumption area would look like. And so one of the requirements is that the boundaries of that common consumption area have to be clearly marked. And so I'm going to pause at this time, and it's not truly a steady session, but Mr. Gage Roberts, one of our planners, is going to give you an overview of the common consumption area through a PowerPoint presentation, and hopefully that will answer a lot of questions that may be forming in your mind, and feel free to pause and ask a question on any slide that we might put up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean, Mayor, Commissioners. I am going to walk through a presentation on what a common consumption area in downtown Salina would look like. So we'll do an introduction to the concept. Dean hit a lot of those topics earlier, but we'll do an overview of them. We will discuss applying for a CCA as the licensee. In this case, the city of Salina would be the license holder for the common consumption area. We will look at a map, as well as a map of the drinking establishments in downtown Salina. We'll discuss being a participant in a common consumption area, and then an estimated timeline of rollout and public outreach. So currently, alcohol may only be consumed on public sidewalks, plazas, parking lots, as part of an approved sidewalk dining area, or as part of an alcoholic beverage special event retailer's permit. Downtown Salina currently has seven major sidewalk dining areas, five of which serve alcohol. Those would be Martinelli's, Yaya's, Jose Peppers, the Paramount, and then Blue Sky Brewery are the five approved sidewalk dining locations that serve alcohol. And then in 2024, there were two special event retailer's permits that were approved for downtown events, and those were Feast on the Fay in Salina on Tap, two events that came before this commission for approval to serve alcohol in the public right-of-way. So per Kansas State Statute 412659G1, a common consumption area means a defined indoor or outdoor area, not otherwise subject to a license issued pursuant to the Kansas Liquor Control Act or the Club and Drinking Establishment Act where the possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverage is allowed pursuant to a common consumption area permit. So that means basically that a common consumption area is a regulated social drinking zone where patrons can drink within the designated boundaries of the area outside of a licensed bar, restaurant, or other establishment that is permitted to sell alcoholic beverages by the state of Kansas and the city of Salina. A common consumption area does not allow individuals to bring their own alcoholic beverages into the district. So establishing a common consumption area does not mean you could go to a gas station and buy a six-pack of beer, bring it within the boundaries, and consume it. Beverages must be purchased from an establishment within or adjacent to the established common consumption area who has elected to participate. So that could be drinking establishments, caterers, or temporary permit holders.
I got a question for you there.
Yeah.
Dean said we could stop you.
Hmm?
How do we communicate? When I see common consumption, I think, bring the cooler. How's that going to be communicated? I've read through this, I know what the system is, but...
So we are actively working on an outreach plan, not just to drinking establishments and downtown businesses, but also the general public to inform them, and one of our final slides is a cup that if you are serving alcohol within a common consumption area, you're required to have a cup with the logo or trademark identifying the business or event or temporary permit holder that's participating in the common consumption area, and if you are not using the trademarked cup, that would be a violation, and you...
So there will be a public information?
Correct, correct, yes. And we will, there is, we are currently working on public outreach documents and implementation. We're going to get into that at the end, but the plan would be for a sunrise clause for this to start on September 1st, and so the summer months would give us time to continue developing public outreach materials for social media, our website, as well as holding a meeting to better inform the public of what exactly a common consumption area is.
When you mentioned adjacent, is that immediately adjacent to the boundary?
So that would be within the boundary. Dustin, we can...
It said within or adjacent to, I think on the previous slide it was.
Yes, correct. Yeah, can you go to the map, Dustin? So Dean was alluding to this before I stepped up here, but we can go to the proposed map. So this is a map of the proposed common consumption area boundary with the downtown drinking establishments that currently have licenses with state alcoholic beverage control within. So the yellow boundary would be our proposed common consumption boundary. That boundary is, sorry, flip it ahead, would be Elm Street to the north and South Street to the south, with Fifth and Seventh Streets being the boundary to the east and west. And it would also include two bumpouts that would include the garage and the yard to the east, and then to the west would include the Smoky Hill Museum area where they have the Smoky Hill Museum, Street Fair, and events like that. So if you are located within the, within that yellow boundary, and you elect to participate in the common consumption area, you can then serve alcohol to patrons who could then take their beverage in a specially marked cup and walk within the boundaries of the special event or the common consumption area. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, that does. I just thought I saw the word adjacent, within or with, adjacent.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I don't know the page number. It's got two paragraphs on it.
Hey, Dean, you think you can...
It's the one, the slide right before History of CCA Legislation in Kansas.
Well, the most common, and this would be, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that, but let's suppose we set the boundary of the district at the west sidewalk line of South Seventh Street, and let's say the scheme was still open in a licensed drinking establishment. The scheme is adjacent to the sidewalk, which is part of the common consumption area. So if you are, we have tried not to draw lines there. We've tried to use hard boundaries and not use sidewalks for that, but if that were the case, then the scheme would be adjacent to the common consumption area which starts on the Seventh Street sidewalk. So they would be eligible to participate or have patrons there because they're adjacent by touching on the district. But I, looking at the map, we don't really have any drinking establishments that are right on the edge of the boundary or adjacent to, but that would be, as a zoning administrator, that's what adjacent would mean. It would mean touching on and next to the boundary.
So that proverbial gas station three blocks away couldn't petition to...
That would not be considered adjacent, because it's not touching.
Right.
Thank you, Dean. Dustin, we can keep going. So Dust, or Dean touched on the legislation, but in 2023, allowing cities and counties to keep streets open to vehicular traffic within the boundaries of a common consumption area and requiring appropriate signage to identify those boundaries. That really sped up the number of communities that were adopting these common consumption areas. So here is a map from January of last year of all of the counties in Kansas that have common consumption areas currently adopted. Keep going, Dustin. As of April of 2025, there were 42 active common consumption area permits in the state, 28 of which the city is the licensee. And other communities, as Dean mentioned, in Kansas, including Hayes, Topeka, Lawrence, Emporia, Pittsburgh, Manhattan is actively working towards adopting one. They have all started the process or have adopted a common consumption area. Keep going. So downtown Hayes was an early adopter and has provided a framework for other communities. On the left, you can see an overview of their common consumption area, and then beneath you can see the signage they use to identify their boundaries. So there is both a pole sign, in this case, they place them on their stop signs, that shows where they're entering or exiting the area, and then there's also a ground demarcation that shows that you have either entered the area in which alcohol is allowed to be consumed on public property, or you are exiting that area and would need to dispose of your drink. Keep going. So a city or county must first establish a common consumption area by ordinance or resolution. That is why we are here today, along with our reorganization of the alcohol code. The city or county determines the location and the boundaries, which we have work to do through our map, and then cities and counties can also establish rules on the following. It includes hours and days of operation, containers, whether streets can be shut down or should be shut down for certain events, participants, and then who may obtain the common consumption area permit. There's an online permit, so once there was an ordinance adopted, the city would apply for the permit. There is a $100 permit fee, and Dean's going to talk a little more about that, the next steps here in a bit, but permits can be issued to the city, the county, and then those permits are issued for one year and can be renewed annually, so forth.
The signage on the previous slides there, will that be at the expense of the city?
Yes, so that would be, we are still working to identify where that signage would be coming from, but yes, it would be the permit holder, in this case, the city, would be responsible for demarcating the boundaries of the common consumption area. Correct. So here is a map of our downtown drinking establishments. There are three drinking establishments in downtown that have no food sales. There are 11 restaurants, and then the garage in the Stiefel Theater have drinking establishment licenses. Events like, or locations like the Temple do not, but they often have caterers, as Dean alluded to. So we looked at that boundary and then proposed our common consumption area boundary, which as we looked at earlier, would go from Elm Street to South Street and would include, would be Fifth and Seventh Street to the east and west, which would help the differentiate between adjacent to or within, as Dean explained. So participating in a common consumption area, so a licensee located within the common consumption area may request to participate. This could include a temporary permit holder, a CMB on-premise retailer, an alcoholic beverage retailer, or a caterer, and they must request permission through a form to the state ABC. The application to participate is valid for the duration of the license, as long as the common consumption area remains valid, and patrons are allowed to then remove alcoholic liquor from that approved permit holder within the boundaries of the common consumption area. And then if authorized by the common consumption area permit holder, licensees can also operate a non-contiguous service area within the common consumption area. So in an example of the Salina Downtown Farm and Art Market, if it was decided that a restaurant, say Blue Sky or Jose Peppers, wanted to have a cart in which they could roll it out for the farmer's market on a Saturday and serve margaritas within the boundaries of the common consumption area, you can operate one non-contiguous service area, so one area that's not your physical establishment, within the boundaries of the common consumption area. And then licensees' responsibilities, they must have a container displaying the trade name or logo, they must comply with all regulations set forth in the ordinance, and they must ensure that their common consumption area permit remains active. So example signage, the boundaries of a common consumption area must be clearly marked using a physical barrier or apparent line of demarcation. Most communities in Kansas, Hayes as an early adopter, went with the thumbs-up-thumbs-down cup signage, and most communities that have followed have adopted that same signage to clearly mark the boundaries of the common consumption area. And then this next slide will show an example cup. So this is Force of Nature Brewing in DeSoto, Kansas. They are a participant in DeSoto's common consumption area, so when they serve... So when they serve an alcoholic beverage that a patron can then take out into the common consumption area, it must be served in a plastic cup identifying the name of that business. And so in the case of a caterer, a caterer that was participating would be responsible for having a cup identifying the caterer's name. And then in the case of a special event, a special event cup could be identified for that special event within the boundary of the common consumption area to identify alcohol that was coming from there. So this last slide, we wanted to give you an idea of our, our next steps in terms of public outreach and further collaboration. This has been a collaborative process up to this point. We've had many conversations with our state ABC agent, Agent Fisher, as well as the police department, the fire department, legal counsel, and others. So if an ordinance were to pass today to adopt a common consumption area in downtown Salina, we would submit the common consumption application to the state next week. That is a 30-day review period on behalf of the state where we provide them a map and our ordinance. In that time, we would work to finalize the sign purchase details. We would also work on drinking establishment outreach, including creating a common consumption area local application where we can have. So you have to submit an application to the state. And we would have a requirement that you fill out a form and submit an application to the city of Salina as well, where you would identify your participation in the cup that you were using to identify your establishment. We would work on a map attachment for downtown businesses to use. And we would prepare drinking establishments to apply by going out and speaking with them further. We have been in front of the Salina Downtown Board once before, and we would like to go back end of July and provide, provide them our outreach plan, how we continue to better inform the public of what exactly a common consumption area is and what it means. We would look to have a downtown drinking establishment stakeholder meeting the week of August 8th and continue with general outreach and education on our website and through social media. In August, we would look to prepare the boundaries, putting up signage, finalizing the physical boundary of the common consumption area with a tentative start of September 1st for the establishment of our common consumption area. So that gives you a overview of common consumption from the state and then how we are looking to adopt and address common consumption here in Salina. And I'll pass it back to Mr. Andrew.
I just wanted to touch on some of the questions that we got and, and run through a couple scenarios of, of how this might work. One thing I wanted to note about the boundary is that over on the east side, and I don't know if Dustin can pull the map up, but one thing we did was we made sure the boundary at Iron goes to the center of the river. And so there are, are plans for a Plaza area that would be on the east side of Fourth Street over across from the garage. And as the boundary is proposed, the boundary is in the center of the river channel so that Plaza area would be part of the common consumption area. So we think the most common scenario where this would be used is that there is a, a musical performance or concert of some kind at Campbell Plaza. A patron can walk into Jose Peppers, purchase a margarita in a special identified cup, walk out of Jose Peppers and sit down on Campbell Plaza and enjoy the music and have a, a margarita at, at the same time. One thing that, that has been a question, if you are a downtown merchant and you own a clothing boutique, you can opt out of the common consumption area and you can simply post a sign that says you don't want patrons bringing their beverage into your store. And that, that right belongs to, just because you're a merchant inside the common consumption area does not mean that you have to allow people to bring their beverages into your establishment. And so we do acknowledge that this is going to take some public education. But one of the things I wanted to touch on is special events. And there's, there's a couple different scenarios that we have worked on in the past. So how, how this is set up, I'm thinking particularly of two events. Salina on tap and we had a, a post-race event that was planned for the Salina Marathon. So without the common consumption area at the Salina Marathon finish line, we worked with them to set up a area. And we required them to have fencing and barriers around the area where alcoholic beverages were served. Only one way in and out that had to be monitored. You could only consume alcohol within that small fenced-in area. And under this scenario, if a common consumption area is created, in that particular case, the event, post-race event for the Salina Marathon was catered by the Tipsy Traveler, which is a traveling caterer. And so under state provisions, if the caterer provides advance notice and requests of the state to be added as a participant to the common consumption area, if you are having a public or special event inside the common consumption area and the caterer who's providing alcohol for that event is a participant in the common consumption area, then you can dispense with the fencing, the gates, the wristbands, all of those things. And so you wouldn't have to have a confined or defined area for that event, provided that the common consumption area rules are adhered to by the caterer, which means they've got to have a special glass that identifies the Tipsy Traveler. And they have to be a participant in the common consumption area. The same scenario could hold true with Salina on tap, where the event organizer could go to the state and ask to be a participant in the common consumption area. And as long as the entire event takes place inside the common consumption area, then there wouldn't be a need for a separate permit in the area. It would not be confined to a fenced-in area, but anyone could go anywhere within the common consumption area. So those are two scenarios as it relates to special events, which we believe would make it easier for event organizers, but also easier for city staff in terms of reviewing those requests and not having to bring every one to the city commission. As I've looked at the law, it, because of the fact that the events are in the middle of a street that's being closed, the two that were on the agenda today, such as Feast on the Fay or Santa Fe Showdown, those would still come back to the governing body for individual approvals, even if this were adopted. But there are a lot of other special events that would take place downtown within the common consumption area that they wouldn't have to get multiple permit approvals or have fencing or gates or wristbands or things like that if, as long as they were in the common consumption area. And so the couple things, I think there, there was a question about the cost. And we do have a fiscal note. And the fiscal note mentions a couple things. There would be a cost to the city to purchase and install signs. And it's a fairly, it's a fairly large area. So you're, you're going to have signs posted and some demarcation on the sidewalk at those locations. As proposed, the city of Salina would be the applicant. And so we would be responsible for the $100 annual license fee. Mr. Wood may have some more specific numbers, but there is a slight, it would be a slight increase in the city's liability insurance premiums if we are the permit holder. And then anything that happens inside the four walls or a patio or sidewalk dining area is a responsibility of that licensed drinking establishment. But the city would be responsible for any violations that occurred out in public spaces within the common consumption area. So in terms of fiscal impact, you would have purchasing and installation of signs and maintaining those and the demarcation. There would be a hundred dollar annual license fee that have to be renewed each year. There would be a slight increase in liability insurance premiums. And so those, those would be the primary impacts. We have had and did provide in your packet a number of letters of support that staff received and included in your packet. And as Gage mentioned, we did hold an educational session with downtown board of advisors to discuss this concept with them, which they endorsed at that meeting. And so there were a couple different ways to do this. For us, it didn't make sense to have a standalone ordinance when we were already working so hard on getting the entire code reorganized. So option one would be to approve ordinance 11251, which reorganizes the entire chapter five, but also includes section 533, which would establish a common consumption area in the downtown area. You could approve the ordinance with any amendments to the provisions of the common consumption area or to the boundary of the common consumption area that you think are appropriate. Or you could approve the reorganization of chapter five as proposed, but delete the common consumption area and decide not to establish that at this time. Or you could maintain the status quo and decide to make no changes to the city's alcohol code. The result of this action would be that the common consumption area would not be established. And so because most of these provisions that are in the code, we made no substantive changes. They're going to live on in the code in their continued somewhat disorganized manner. We have a effective date in this ordinance of September 1st. And that would allow all these steps to do for public education and outreach before we eased into this in September. But that is the plan that we put together. And I do know we have some representatives of downtown Salina who may wish to speak on this matter. But I'd be open to any questions that you have about common consumption.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Andrew?
I guess my concern is, I was thinking about underage drinking, but this would probably be actually people who are legally old enough to drink too. Are the cups dated or do they have to be turned in when you leave the zone? If not, what's to keep a person from getting a cup from Blue Sky on Monday? Or they're closed on Monday, on Tuesday, and coming back Thursday with their own?
You're not supposed to carry it out with you?
So it is collected when you?
It's not collected. You're just supposed to not carry it outside the boundaries.
Even if it's empty?
Even if it's empty. You should, you should dispose of it. But if you don't, there are, there are things, if you're, if you're creative minded, and we've had some of those discussions, if you're devious or creative minded, there are some go, go-arounds. But the other thing that can be worked on is to, to have the establishments change the color or change something on their cups periodically. So somebody that has a, a year-old cup that they saved from the previous year can't refill it at home and, and bring it in. But there, there is, there is no perfect, if, if you sit down and plot, you can probably do some workarounds. But that, that is the idea, is to not have sealed containers, not have anything that's glass, have readily identifiable plastic cups so that the people that are enforcing laws within the district know that you have a cup that you've obtained within the common consumption area.
Is it practical to maybe write the date on the bottom? Like a permanent marker on the bottom, the bottom? Just something I can think of right now, but.
I would imagine there's a level of self-policing that's going to go on because the incentive of the, the business owners, they don't want people coming in. I mean, they, they want to sell a beverage. So if they have somebody coming in with outside beverages and they, they have a, a cup that they've kept a hold of, I imagine at some point, they're going to address that because they want to make a profit. And then as far as the underage drinking goes, I mean, I think patrons and, and staff are going to maybe see somebody who's, who's suspect and start to ask questions. And I, I think that would kind of be again, a self-regulating thing.
So we, we did meet with representatives of the police and fire department. And so the police department is aware of this. What we learned or what the, the city of Topeka did when they rolled this out was that they, just the first three months or so, they, they showed a little more police presence and visibility within the common consumption area. And then kind of dialed it back to normal. But they did kind of have a stepped-up presence when this was being rolled out in Topeka. And they, they did not experience or report any problems. But Topeka's had this for just about a year now, where this has been in operation. And Hayes, I think, just a little bit longer than that.
Well, it seems like a good idea. I'm sure there are people walking down the street now who have Mountain Dew bottles or Coca-Cola cans or whatever else that have beverages inside that container that are different from what it was when it was originally sold. So it at least legalizes what's, what's going on anyway.
I did want to make a personal observation that I first met Mr. Longbine in 1993, when I sent him a letter about some property being rezoned across the street from him. So he responded to that letter and came in to express his questions and concerns about what might be happening on the east side of the Huntington Ditch. And so that's one of the pleasures of my job, is interacting with neighbors who get letters from us and want to come in and talk about their neighborhood, so.
1993.
And he thought he didn't remember, right?
I recall you and your wife, wife Linda going around the block down the street pulling your son in the wagon.
Yes, we always went down Huntington in the wagon. And we said, we're going to stop at the Longbines and visit because they'll be out working in their yard.
Do we have any more questions?
I, I got some comments and questions.
I've got a, I've got a couple of questions maybe for.
I'm just surprised Commissioner Davis thinks up all the workarounds. Set my mind, well, I just go back and forth to my car.
The folks I've hung out with, I guess.
If, if I purchase a drink at the Voo and they do not serve food and I decide to go to Blue Sky, am I able to take that drink into Blue Sky? Or is that up to each establishment?
That is up to the Blue Sky. Whether they want to allow you to bring anything in. That, that's an individual decision for them. That's an individual decision for them.
Okay. And because of some of Commissioner Davis's friends, what type of enforcement and violations, penalties, fines are associated with this? Are there any?
Well, again, from the ABC perspective, someone who has a drinking establishment, a drinking establishment license, if they're not properly supervising their premises, and they happen to serve to a minor or something like that, they would be responsible for any fines for those violations. If there are violations that occur out in public spaces, such as underage drinking or things like that, the city would be responsible for those violations from ABC's perspective.
Enforcing somebody that's down there with a cup that's not...
Or somebody that's brought in a glass bottle, and they've brought it into one of our plazas, that's an enforcement item for us. And the expectation would be that we would enforce that violation.
Yeah, I guess I would, as we move into this, and I've been in districts like this before, when I've traveled, and I do like the idea, you know, where you're able to walk down to another place with a drink, or whether you're looking at sculpture tour, murals, or whatever you're doing, that it gives you an opportunity to do that. I guess I'd tell the public, "We need to self-regulate." You know, it's kinda like you tell your children, you know, "You can do it until you start abusing it." And I think that that's what the public needs to realize, that we'll do this, but if we have too many violations and too many problems, we can always remove it. So, I guess that's what, you know, we need to self-regulate, as I believe Mayor Lincoln Wood said.
And we've written this into the ordinance, and it repeats something that's already there, but within the common consumption area ordinance, we have a provision that says, "Inappropriate conduct shall not be permitted within the boundaries of the common consumption area. Any person engaging in inappropriate conduct may be subject to removal from the common consumption area or any event held within the area. Inappropriate conduct includes, but is not limited to, fighting, harassment, destruction of property, or committing any violation of city ordinances or state law." So, that's kind of a catch-all that's within the common consumption area ordinance.
So, I guess where I have conflict is, was it a year and a half, two years ago, we passed an open container ordinance on public property? And I think this sends a lot of mixed signals regarding that.
Just curious to ask about that.
And I guess my question is, Commissioner Hopick led to, could a future commission, this is gonna be an annual renewal? Is it gonna come before future commissions for renewal? Or is it just gonna pass through?
I think that would be a question for Mr. Wood, as to how he would approach that. But the way that this is structured, if you would agree to pass this ordinance and create that, the city manager would be the applicant for a license on an annual basis. And I think, most likely, he would come back to you with a report and say, "This is how this went this year, and it's up for renewal. Would you like to renew it?" I mean, the other approach is that the City of Lawrence had adopted it as a pilot program with a specific sunset in it, but they're the only city I know that's done that. But part of the thing is that the license does have to be renewed each year. So, if it's not going well, I think either communication from the city manager to the city commissioner, from the city commission to city manager, when it's time to renew that license, would play a factor in how that was done.
So, with all beverages having to be in a designated plastic cup, would that leave the other provisions of the open container rules that we passed unchanged? Is there any potential over that, unless persons who were, I'm gonna use a bad word, but squatting on public property, if they got a hold of a plastic cup and was just, you know, refilling it, I mean, are they gonna be...
As long as you don't have an aluminum can, or a open bottle that's on the plaza, having an aluminum can, or having an open bottle, would be a violation of the common consumption area ordinance, because you can only have beverages that are in the approved plastic cup. And if you have an open container that's not the plastic cup, then you're in violation of the open container provisions.
Is the parking lot on Seventh Street in the proposed area?
Yes, it goes all the way to Seventh, yes.
So, anyone...
You're still thinking of workarounds, aren't you?
Well, I'm concerned about the decision that one of our officers would have to make. Are these three guys sitting here in violation or not?
That's part of the public education process. But if someone is sitting there, and they're drinking a bottle of beer out of a bottle, they're in violation of the open container provisions. They're also in violation of the common consumption area provisions, because they're not drinking out of a cup that has the approved logo on it of one of the establishments that's in the district.
So, it'd be two citations?
Potentially. But this carves out an exception to the open container prohibition, but that exception is just for plastic cups that have the logo of participating drinking establishments in the common consumption area. That's the only carve-out. And if you don't have a cup that's got the logo on it of a licensed establishment, you are still in violation of the open container provision.
So, that carve-out is automatically created by what we would do today, or do we have to go back and create?
No, it would be automatically created if you vote to authorize the establishment of a common consumption with these rules.
If you, the establishment gets a license, is that just a one-time event, or can you get that license for...
Well, we have three categories, people. We have the permanent drinking establishment. So, Jose Peppers is a permanent drinking establishment. They have a drinking establishment license, and they can, someone can go in there and purchase something. If I'm having some sort of special event downtown, then I can hire a caterer. That caterer has to have a license. That caterer can receive approval from State ABC to be a participant in our common consumption area, and they can serve beverages at the special event, as long as they have a special identifying cup and logo that says Tipsy Traveler. And then, the third category is people who don't have a drinking establishment or premises license, and they become a temporary permit holder. So, Meridian Media is the sponsor for Salina on Tap. Meridian Media doesn't have a regular liquor license or drinking establishment license, but they can apply for a temporary permit under their name, and they can apply to be a participant in the common consumption area, but they would have to have their beverages in a approved cup with their logo.
So, the established bars and restaurants, they can do this all year long? You can walk out of there anytime? It's not a special event?
If they sign up and participate. They can also choose not to. But as to Commissioner Hopick's question, if I own Blue Sky Brewery, and I don't want somebody bringing in a Paramount cup into my establishment, I can deny them bringing that cup in. That's a business decision. If I wanna let them in, I can, and if I don't want to, I can. That's a business decision.
So, there could potentially, on any given weekend, be 13 different cups walking around, or however many bars are around in the kitchen, sack number?
If they all choose to participate.
Yeah.
That's one of the reasons we provided you the map, so you could see how many there are, and where they are.
Well, after 38 years of hard work, this may be what you go down known for. This may be the Dean Andrew District, you know?
I was saying, I don't know why I got stuck with alcohol, 'cause if you ask me what bottle of wine to buy, or what whiskey I recommend, you're not asking the right person. Somehow, I have, over the years, learned a lot about the state and its alcohol laws.
Just to satisfy my own intellectual curiosity, ballpark, how much time do we have wrapped up in this? It has to be substantial, because it's very thorough.
Well, it's a combination of things. I, Mr. Roberts and I collaborated. I will say that we had five different days where we blocked out five hours and went into seclusion. So, I'd say 25 hours of working on this and hammering these things together. But that's a combination of both reorganizing the code and making this fit. And then, Mr. Roberts, when he was still a student at K-State, had an internship with us, and one of his internship projects was to do some research on common consumption. So, he had had a head start, so.
Nice, well done. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Richard Humphreys, Salina, Kansas. I'm not for sure on the verbiage, but it'd be nice to hear the word eco-friendly cups and such. The inner Phil Black is channeled right there.
Thank you.
Benwyn Hill, Salina. According to the map, this is quite a few blocks that this could take place. Has Jason looked in, or called the insurance company to find out how much the premium's gonna go up for the liability on this? Because this is an area, we're not closing off traffic. So, you got cars along with people. Have we looked into, or are you just gonna pass this ordinance without, and then find out how much the premium's gonna go up after it's passed? Jacob?
No, I have not talked with your insurance provider. We certainly can do that. Forty-two other communities have done this. I can't imagine that it would be a substantial increase to us, but we certainly can check. And if the City Commission wishes to pass this tonight, and we find that it's a huge insurance issue, we can bring it back to the Commission at a later date.
Thank you.
He said he put 25 hours in.
Ma'am, could I have your name and address, please? Could we please have your name and address? Thank you.
Ceseo Sanders, Salina, Kansas. They said they spent 25 hours, I think they're short. What's Kansas? Windy, plastic cups, down the street they go. And somebody mentioned the market, Saturday morning market. There's children there. You're there with an open cup. Kids are there. They set that cup down to do business, pay or pick up. That child get a hold of that cup? Innocent. And then, I think that would be a good way to help get revenue for Salina, because put a few police cars out around there as they walk off with their merchandise, and get them for DUI. But they have not thought this out far enough. There's too many holes. They have not used enough common sense.
Thank you.
Yes.
Norman Allen, Salina. If the city is involved in retail sales, is the city in competition with private businesses who pays taxes?
Might wanna clarify that point. The city would not be selling the alcohol. The same businesses that sell it now would be the ones who sell it. The city's not gonna have a City of Salina beer booth.
That isn't what I heard.
It's plain up there. Okay.
Good afternoon, John Blanchard. First of all, I really love the outdoor dining. I love when we added the outdoor dining downtown. Great. I love the feast, the events you guys talked about earlier, special events, love those too. I like the idea of a common consumption area, but I'll tell you what my concerns are. First of all, when this whole thing got kicked off downtown, it was with the Fieldhouse, and then the Star Bonds. But the Fieldhouse was, we wanted something for the kids. It was youth-driven. The alley was proposed as one of the revenue generators, another kid-family-friendly thing. My main concern is, with expanding this entire consumption area, is that are we getting away from the focus and what has really begun to grow as sort of a niche that Salina has as a kid-family-friendly downtown area? The bowling, the other stuff, even the museums. I like that the garage has their alcohol part, because, you know, we wanna attract adults too, and I think it's a perfect match. But it's a really big area, and I'm just concerned that are there enough precautions in place, so that if you've got a big tournament weekend with a lot of families and a lot of kids, that there isn't going to be problems? Because alcohol leads to confrontations, leads to sometimes not the best environment for kids and families. So, I hope that there'll be some precautions built into there. It sounds like we are moving forward with this. I don't have any problem with downtown being responsible about it, and trying to enforce their side of it and everything. But kids will be kids, and irresponsible adults will be irresponsible. So, hopefully, you'll be able to put something in place that we're able to enforce this, because, yeah, the honor code is the big thing. But let's trust, verify, and enforce as much as possible. Thank you.
Thanks.
Leslie Bishop, Salina Downtown, Executive Director. As far as the farm and art market is concerned, that's run by the Salina Downtown. We have every right to approve or disapprove a vendor. We're not gonna have a whiskey wagon or a Tipsy Traveler at the farm and art market at 7:30 in the morning. The other thing is, our market closes at 11:30. The earliest any restaurant that serves alcohol that opens is at 11:00, so they have a 30-minute window. So, I assure you that now, we're not gonna bring up a Tipsy Traveler or the whiskey wagon to the market. It may, or may not be happening now, that people are bringing a cooler to an event that we are holding downtown. I don't know. But I do know, my colleagues, who are other directors of downtown, not as large maybe as our district, but they have had no issues with abusive alcoholic behavior on the streets. In some cases, it's been less, because there is some control of where they can go, when they, you know, they can't leave the common consumption area with a cup. I also kind of agree, the plastic cups concern me just a bit in terms of an eco-friendly thing, but that is a discussion for another time. I think this also is an opportunity for downtown Salina to bring another element of visitors to downtown. It can also be cross-marketing, where if there's a group of people coming down, and they don't, they wanna go and have a beer or margarita, but the other group wants to go shopping, they can take that beer or margarita. If that retail store wants them to come in with that drink, they can do that. So, there's some retail sales that can be happening that will increase the tax revenue. But like I said, it may or may not happen illegally right now, where people are coming downtown to events, bringing their own beer from their home.
Thank you.
Hi, Catherine Kitchens, Salina, Kansas. Just to follow up on Mr. Blanchard's comments, I agree that... I agree that we have done a great job building a family-friendly options for our downtown. I do think this adds another reason to experience our downtown, that we should not be a one-trick pony, and that we should have multiple ways that our downtown is enjoyed and utilized. I am really proud of the conversations that I have about our community and our downtown. I'm stopped on a regular basis by visitors and community members alike going, wow, what has happened? What has done? And I have said over and over again that it's lots of people doing really cool things. And caring about the things they, they're doing, whether that's visual arts, that's family venues, that's events, live music. That there's a little something for everyone, and I feel like this, the common consumption area adds another layer to that and continues this great momentum in our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, if I may, there is a quick point I needed to make.
Sure.
At whatever time is appropriate.
Ma'am.
Do I need to give my name again?
No, you've already commented on this item.
No, this is now why I really came to the camp.
Well, ma'am, we, we're not done with this business yet. There's, there's a
You had, oh, you're just still commenting on this over here.
Right, but you've already commented on this item, on the agenda.
We'll have another chance, Lucille.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, they'll be, they'll be
Sorry.
Yeah, you're fine. Thank you. Mr. Bankston?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, as you've obviously heard, the staff has done the heavy lifting in terms of bringing this matter before you. In talking with Mr. Wood, and also Mr. Andrew and Mr. Jackson, we did want to make you aware, the ordinance, as it has been prepared to be actually signed, does include some very non-substantive edits. Exciting things like formatting and the type of stuff that Ms. Goding, in her role as city clerk, and I'm supposed to watch out for, cross-references, that, that sort of thing. So, just, we thought it best to at least advise you that, that has occurred, but it did not affect the substance of the ordinance at all.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I'll make a, it's, there was a concern about our kids watching us. If there are kids exposed to drinking because of their parent, they're watching their parents drink at home. I don't think watching their parents coming out of the Field House is going to change their experience, their likelihood to pick up drinking. And, and parents have to police their kids. Anyone needing a drink at 9:00 in the morning to go to the farmer's market, probably, I hope is an outlier here and got bigger issues than what the city's going to be able to regulate. And I guess for my crowd, once I leave a restaurant at 8:00 at night, I'm so tired, I'm going home. I'm not thinking about getting a drink to walk down to another restaurant. And if I was out on a, was it first Friday, Thursday? First Friday, thank you. Yeah, it might be nice to walk from one art place to another leisurely. So, it does give, give options. But we have folks, if they're drunk, they're going to be drunk whether they have a cup in their hand or not. And I don't think this is going to increase our problems. I was at a meeting this weekend, and there were some, a lot of attorneys there. One was from Shawnee, one was from Topeka, and, and the attorney from Topeka. Her words were, it has not increased the debauchery on the sidewalks downtown, having that common consumption area. And, you know, it was nice, you know, if, if you didn't know it was there, you, you wouldn't pay any attention to it. So, I think this is certainly worth a good try. So, I move to approve ordinance 25-11251, reorganizing Chapter 5 alcoholic beverages of the Salina Code, including Section 5-33, which establishes a common consumption area in the downtown area.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of ordinance number 25-11251, reorganizing Chapter 5 alcoholic beverage of, of the Salina Code, including Section 5-33, which establishes a common consumption area in downtown area. Need a roll call vote, please, and thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Longline?
Nay.
Mayor Lenkowitz?
Aye. That brings us to other business. Any commissioner have other business they wish to discuss?
Just one. I hate to be a bumblebee that just won't leave the picnic, but it's concerning the fee, the excess fee that we're charging at Dean Evans, in particular Kansas Wesleyan, for the practice field, just because of their size and, wait, I, I've not tried to become an expert on artificial turf, because the, the science goes beyond what my college chemistry is going to take me. But I can't, you know, I look up the, the factors that increase wear and tear. Certainly, running over the same part of the turf over and over and over and over again, could theoretically increase the, the tear, but the, the turfs are built more for performance capabilities, as I'm understanding it, than for the, the people using, you know. Whereas you don't build a real thin artificial turf elementary school and a real thick one for high school or, or professionals. It's, it's the materials, the, the cushioning, the infill, that affect performance. And I would just like us to review the issue of whether we have any justification for charging a surcharge for the bigger, heavier user. We don't charge that on the field house that turf is used. I mean, we don't inquire the weight, the size of who's going to be, be using it. If, if, if we don't really have a justifiable basis for doing it, and it's not common in practice, I, I think we need to, to stop doing it, basically. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but it, it's just been gnawing at me that we, we don't really have a, you know, documented reason to be doing this.
Understood. Mr. Wood, refresh my recollection. When is this up for review again? Isn't it an annual thing we were going to circle back to?
So, the fees are in place, and typically with a park and rec fee, if we don't increase it more than 10% in a year, then parks can do that internally. But I, you know, Kansas Wesleyan has been in contact with the city commission, and I, I've been in contact with them as well. We certainly could bring the issue back and kind of have a review of where we, where we are now that we put those fees in place, kind of look at what happened this year as far as usage. We could provide some information in that regard. I, I'm not sure I'm going to have any more information about the usage, or that, you know, the, how the turf was built.
Are there, like, national consultants on turf?
We can, we can certainly look at that. I, I'm, I'm not certain that we've found anybody that's an expert, and, and I'm not sure we found anybody that's done studies that kind of show the difference in weight and, and any of that sort of thing. The information that we provided at the last time when we increased those fees is really kind of what we have. We can look into that a little bit more, certainly if the commission wants us to.
Well, and it's not, you know, the fees, fine, it's just the surcharge for the, and, and the reason we're charging, that we're just using to justify the surcharge.
The reason is adult size and large rosters.
Well, that field was built for adult size. As far as I can tell, it, it wasn't the fields are, are built to handle people of basically all sizes, is what, is what I'm understanding. And again, I'm kind of a duck out of water, because I am not talking about something I'm going to ever claim to be an expert on. So, even when I research it, I may not be researching the part that I need to be researching. And I don't know where you get an expert on some, you know, on this matter.
Yeah, and we've certainly not, I mean, we can, we can do some additional looking, but I, we've not found any studies or anything that's really looked at that particular aspect.
I have a couple of things. Earlier today, I received a question about if we were extending fireworks to July 4th. I, I mean, from July, to July 5th. So, I got up and looked at the calendar, July 5th's on a Saturday. I said, no, we're, it's, we're not extending it. So, the legal time to shoot fireworks, as I understand, is July 3rd and 4th. And when I looked at the calendar and I saw July 5th was on a Saturday, I thought, oh, we're going to we're going to have issues. So, someone wants to have something, they're, this person asked a question, having an event, would they be able to apply for a fireworks permit?
It's a good question. I'd have to, I don't, I don't have the answer off the top of my head, but it looks like Lauren Driscoll might have the answer.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, Lauren Driscoll, Director of Community Development Services, Commissioner Longline, that somebody's having an event on a Saturday night, and they would like to have professional fireworks at the event?
Well, I don't know how professional.
So, no one's a professional after July 4th, unless you're a licensed professional. But you could get, through the fire department, through the Fire Marshal's Office, a pyrotechnic permit to be able to do a fireworks display as part of an event. And then, if that event is significant enough, it would have a special event permit that goes along with it. So, we have a couple of those throughout the year that do occur, that have fireworks. So.
So, it'd be, have to be a professional licensed?
Yes, someone who is professionally licensed to do pyrotechnic or professional fireworks events. But if they are going to have a show, we do have a permit through that, through special events, and through the Fire Marshal's Office.
Well, I would just imagine that we're going to have a lot of fireworks going off on July 5th, being a Saturday night. Another issue that I'd like to bring attention to is our commission memorandum that came out in the packet this week from Martha Tasker concerning the Water Department, and, well, it's titled, "Salina Citizens Continue to Conserve Water." And a lot of good information in here that our water demand has, actually went down. People are being good stewards of water and using efficient devices, and so, if anyone's interested in that, please look online for it. I'll read this last sentence. Ultimately, water conservation must be a shared responsibility between the city and all its customers, including private domestic well owners who share the same source of supply. So, even though we're getting a lot of rain recently, we still need to be good stewards of this resource.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Okay, that brings us to Citizens Forum. Please keep your comments within the three-minute timeframe. Thank you.
Richard Albert Humphrey II, Salina, Kansas. This theme for this week is "We Are the Champions", and I want to say thank you to all the CNAs that have chosen this profession and moving forward. I've said this before, it is, it's an honor sometimes to be the last relationship of some of our beloved community members towards the end-life process. But all is well, and thank you guys for your service.
Thank you.
Lauren Alasalina again. You need to start looking for a new bond person. There are AAA-plus bond companies out there. My father-in-law had a AAA-plus rating done in Badger Street. So, you can get higher, better, so look for a new one. You need to talk to people who operate tracks that have traffic. There are people out there that have traffics, operate this, and it's got grass on it. And that's an expensive deal. You start talking about grass tracks, artificial versus natural. How about public restrooms? If you're going to have all this drinking downtown, this way, the private owner will not have to allow anyone to come in there. They do have, other countries have public bathrooms. I've seen them. And the city employees, they keep very good care of them, so you could put in a new public bathroom here. So, I guess that's all I got.
Thank you.
Hello, Martha Salina, Kansas. I would ask the mayor if I could bring up a document for my presentation to the commissioners.
Yeah, just let me make sure I can do it the correct way. Do we need to hand it to, to the clerk, or what's the proper protocol for that?
Oh, no, my time is running.
Sorry, there's just a, well, if we could get it to, yeah, thank you. Sorry, I, it's just part of the
It's that way I get the copy for our
Thank you. Not trying to be difficult, just have a protocol.
Okay, I come before you to make awareness of our upcoming Juneteenth celebration also known as Freedom Day. It's coming the 17th to the 20th. Why do we celebrate Juneteenth? And when we ask that question, I like the word sankofa. It's a Ghanian language word meaning to return and get it, or go back and fetch, meaning the history of the black Americans in America, their accomplishments, and where they are now. Juneteenth is not for only whites. Also, we have whites on our committee. Also, to prove that, Joe Biden has made it a national holiday. Celebrated in Texas at first, now it's all over America. It started in 1865, when the Union Commander Gordon Granger, he was the one that went to Gauze, Texas, to tell the slaves that they were once now free, even after Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Speech, for the Frederick States to free the slaves in. So, we want to have everybody come out and help us celebrate. It starts June the 19th. We're going to have Faith and Freedom. It's going to be a show that we should, a show at 3:00. Okay, also at 6:00, then we'll have a panel discussion after that. We'll have R&B in the park, and we, we, we do got a good musician there. It's free to the public, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. That's June the 20th. Then, we got a parade celebration from 11:00 to 4:00, starting on Iron Street, going downtown. Then, we'll have food, vendors in the park, so we want everybody to come out. We got some good vendors coming, selling T-shirts, all kind of information we'll be giving at that time. Lot of good food, so come out and join us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You have 30 more seconds if you want it, because I, we tore into your time with the paperwork. I want to make sure you got your fair share.
Well, yeah, yeah, you did kind of, I take a breath now? Because, yeah, if you didn't get a flyer or anything, you go to Juneteenth, Salina, Juneteenth Celebration, and you can find all our events and everything on our website there. It's on Facebook, too. Come out and join us.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Alec High Legman, Salina, Kansas. First, I just wanted to kind of bring up, like, a point about the skate park here in town. First off, I wanted to say skateboarding to me is more than just a sport, it's a lifestyle, it's a, it's a lifesaver. It's a smile maker, it's an all-around beneficial seat of love. I guess what I'm getting at here is, the area behind the Friendship Center here, the grass area back there, or even the area that's just like the, the motel that just got took down. I have a vision back there for either one of those places. Let's see. Let's see. Basically a recreational park for the city or slash plaza in any one of those locations. That's a long-term thing. I know you guys have a lot going on, a lot of things to take care of and sort through, but this is just for long-term. The benefits on that, I believe, would be a new space for youth to be safe and healthy and also learn new skills and socialize with their peers, to host competitions of all sorts, and any, host any events that would increase some revenue to Salina. You could partner with CKF, Salina Shares, the theater for a drive-in movie theater, the public library, the sheriff's office, the Safe Streets Project, the Project Boom for Salina for Public Art. Tony Hawk has a foundation that would grant $25,000 for the building of that project. This also could, you know, boost local economy, environmental gardens, just anything like that, that's for the long-term. And then I guess what I'm asking here for short-term is that the skate park renovation be put further up on the list if possible, because me and the community of skateboarders and bikers and anybody that has wheels that likes to, you know, do that, we have been doing everything that we can. We've exhausted our options for the last 10 and a half years and it seems like nothing ever gets done. We've done petitions, we've done everything that we can do. So our hands are tied and I don't know what to do next. You know, I believe the cracks in the concrete make it hard for us to skateboard there and we've tried to even repair that ourselves. The lights don't come on anymore and a lot of people get off of work and they like to go skate for at least a couple hours before them lights turn off and now they don't even work at all. You know, it just would create a safer space for all of us to harvest friendships and genuine smiles. You know, another big issue on the skate park thing for me would be that there's a lot of dogs that get walked in that area and there's no longer a fence around the skate park. So i- it's, it's hard for us to skateboard and focus on that. Uh, it's, it's unsafe for kids to come in there. Just a handful of issues on that one. And basically that's really all I have for now. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Sorry about that earlier.
No worries.
I'm Lucille Sanders, Salina, Kansas. Greg, I've known you since high school. I don't know if you remember me or not. Yes, my favorite subject, Cozy Inn. I am a subscriber to 311 and every day they put in there for us to vote for something yes or no. Well, luckily they had Cozy Inn there. And I tell you, the citizens really voted for Steve to hopefully win this. Now, I realize you said he did not get a permit to do this, so you're coming at him with all your feet that you can. How many other people have screwed up and forgot to get the permit and then they were approached and then they rectified it and they were allowed to go on? Maybe what you're saying is a little larger than the area should be. But look at these murals on these walls of these buildings covering the complete side of the building. You've got a business on South Ohio, scooters on all sides. And out here in 25, 2450 South Ninth, you've got, I can't pronounce the name of the restaurant, but they've got the side of the building with painting on it. And I know you spent over $600,000. When you get done, whoever makes the contact with the attorneys in Colorado, you know, you can almost hear the laughter all the way back. Salina's been a fool. Look, but we don't care, they're paying us this money, we'll just keep going. For heaven's sakes, straighten yourselves up and let Steve have his signage. It won't be the first time that you've had problems with the city, but this business is over 100 years old. Yes, Bill, you can look down your nose if you want, but understand that the citizens are behind Steve, not only here, but nationwide. Do call in to get Cozy Inns. You think I'm fooling just to check? And I appreciate your time and I know that probably what I've said won't go any further than this room because you've already made up your minds. But you're taking the money away from the citizens of Salina and throwing it to Colorado when you should be looking at what needs to be done within the city here that has not been done. And thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Tina Behringer, Salina. I would just like to announce that the June meeting for the Granny Brigade, which will be Tuesday, June 17th at 7 o'clock, Friendship Center, 746 Comanche, Salina. Our guest speaker will be J.J. Correll. He's recently retired from the U.S. Border Patrol after a 24-year career as a deputy patrol agent in charge of the San Diego Sector. Mr. Correll brings a different view on immigration and what is now transpiring on this forgotten and unknown place called the border. We feel this can be a very informative meeting. It's open to the public and again, it's on Tuesday, June 17th at the Friendship Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Winholz, Salina. I just want to comment on Commissioner Longbine's part on the water usage. There's two reasons why the, the water usages went down in Salina. One is the charges that you get if you're beyond your, what your averages are in January, February and March. And the second is we lost our second largest consumer of water when Philip Sliding left. So, and they used a lot of international water. I know I worked out there as, as far as behind the scenes. As far as people being conservative with water, it's not happening. I live in an area now where that area is probably the worst as far as water usage and abuse. Automatic sprinkler systems every day. Neighborhoods, blocks where they're competing to who has got the greenest yard and it takes water to do that. People with wells, yeah, they're pulling out of the same, I've said this for years, that you're pulling out of the same, same pool as, as the city is pulling out of. And, but there is, there is no stewardship or there's no people conserving water because they want to, um, when they've got a yard that they need to keep up so that they're better than the Joneses across the street or right next door. So, um, I don't know what the solution is. Uh, I guess when the water runs out, that will probably be the solution. Thank God for the rain that we've gotten and being able to, but as has been noted before, when it comes to rainwater, there is no replenishment of rainwater from, from anywhere. It, it comes from the ground, it comes from another source, it's all the same. The earth only has so much water and it just gets dispersed around in different places at different times. So if you, you think that we are, the earth is making new water, that is not the case. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Blanchard, I'll cut this in about half of what I was gonna do, you guys got a long night. The city released a statement and five documents on June 3rd and just want to say I appreciate that you guys spent an hour and 15 minutes in executive session and came to that conclusion. Part of that statement, though, said unbeknownst to the city, Mr. Howard was in contact with Kansas Justice Institute on November 11th, 2023 to ask about represents, representation in this case. Can you tell me or staff, is that evidence in one of those five documents or in all of them or where was, because I read that sentence and then I looked for it in the five documents, I couldn't find it in any of the legal documents that, that were presented there. So what do you, what are you basing that on? What are you basing that date that? And, and what was the purpose for bringing that up? You're not gonna answer?
I'm not going to.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't have the.
Are any of you gonna answer? You spent an hour and 15 minutes in executive session. Was there any information in there that said, here's evidence that Mr. Howard spoke with KJI on November 11th? And I don't even know what it, what it even means. So, um, anyway, I, I won't go any further than that, but I was kind of hoping you might be able to clarify somehow because it, it kind of, what I think you kind of meant by putting that out there is to get the community against Mr. Howard. And if there's evidence for it, then present it, but I don't think it's fair to kind of say, oh, he did all this and we were trying to work with him. So that's what it looks like. So without answering it, I'm gonna assume that's what that is. As far as Juneteenth and proclamation, I'm gonna end this on a positive note, somewhat, maybe. Our pro, our proclamation policy says that you don't want to do proclamations because you don't want to endorse or oppose different things. Well, a couple of years ago, the city declared Juneteenth a holiday. Do it for Memorial Day, Veterans Day, all that. I would ask you that maybe you find a compromise in your policy and that any day that you give your employees a day off and recognize an official holiday, that you also make a proclamation for those as well, because obviously you do endorse those. And so I've got 20 seconds left. I lied about finishing early, but a lot of it was silence, which the other silence is Commissioner Ivy, I had asked you to clarify some of the questions in the three minutes I had last week. Were you, are you able to clarify any of those? Silence, thank you.
Thank you. That's it, well.
I guess, I got one, one last thing.
Sure, go right ahead.
Just a reminder that tomorrow is the last day of sales for River Festival. Guess it's bracelets. So. Looks like beautiful weather and I hope the community has a great time celebrating Smoky River Festival.
Thank you for the reminder.
What, what, sales for lower prices?
Advanced sales.
Advanced sales, yeah.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I am, I am on the arts and humanities board this year, so.
Push, push the sales, that's right.
So that brings us to the executive session. Can we take a break?
How much time?
Oh, yeah, we need to do something with the, well, let's do a five-minute recess prior. Please.
How much time do we need in the? 20?
Okay.
Okay, I move the city commission recess into executive session after a five-minute recess for 20 minutes to discuss interim city manager's evaluation based upon the need to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting will resume in the room at?
Let's make it 7:20. 7:20, that'll give us time, yep.
7:20.
That'll work.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Executive session for 20 minutes to discuss the interim city manager's evaluation based on the needs to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA dash, KSA 75-4319B subsection 1. The open meeting will resume in this room at 7:20 and we will take a five-minute recess prior to that executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, passes 5-0.
All right, looks like we're back in session. There's a resolution I'm going to read and it will be followed by a motion presumably. Resolution number 25-8299, resolution awarding the deputy city manager and interim city manager merit-based increase in his base compensation as deputy city manager on the basis of his annual performance evaluation and pursuant to current city policy. Whereas, A, deputy city manager Jacob Wood currently serves as temporary interim city manager pursuant to an interim city manager agreement dated January 8, 2025 between the city of Salina and the employee pending completion of the governing body's selection process and the permanent appointment of a city manager. B, current city manager policy provides that in 2025 city employees may qualify for a performance-based merit increase in base pay of up to 3% based upon the employee's annual performance evaluation in concurrence with employee's periodic review date. C, under the interim agreement, the employer agreed to pay the employee his annual base salary as deputy city manager plus the additional sum of $3,000 per month commencing as of January 27, 2025 and continuing until for as long as the employee is employed as an interim city manager interim agreement section 3A under salary. D, the employee's current periodic review date of May 1, 2025 was preserved under the interim agreement at which time the employee was to be considered for performance-based merit increase in accordance with city policy. Reference interim agreement section 3C periodic review. E, the employee is an applicant for the permanent appointment as city manager and if not selected by the governing body for permanent appointment as city manager will be offered reinstatement as deputy city manager. F, the governing body has collectively evaluated the employee's performance, has communicated the results of the evaluation to the employee, and has determined the employee's performance warrants the 3% merit increase to be applied to the employee's base salary as deputy city manager, be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Salina, Kansas. One, merit increase, the governing body awards the interim city manager with a merit-based increase of 3% parenthetical of $4,834.88 to his base salary as deputy city manager effective May 1, 2025. B, acknowledges that the interim city manager shall be paid his adjusted base salary as deputy city manager parenthetical $165,997.52 plus the additional sum of $3,000 per month pursuant to the interim agreement totaling $201,997.52 annualized. For the duration of this tenure as interim city manager and instructs the director of human resources to take such action as are necessary to implement the change, this resolution shall be effective upon its passage and signature by the mayor this June 9, 2025, and I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Linkiewicz, I move that we approve resolution number 25-8299.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Approve resolution number 25-8299. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, passes five zero.
With that, I move for adjournment.
Or adjourned.